I'd like to call a special city council budget meeting to order December eighth. Please call the roll.
Gage, here. Kuz?
Yep.
Zingy?
Here.
Matani?
Here.
Bradbury?
Here.
Yeah?
Here.
Finnegan?
Here.
Seerston?
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Ketchikan City Council would like to respectfully acknowledge first people of this land in Ketchikan, the communist like it's people. That brings us to item three communications. We have twenty-six general government operating capital budget update number twelve. Update number thirteen, both of those are informational and they don't take any at this time. We do have item C, which is the two thousand twenty-six general government operating capital budget update number fourteen, please for fuel lubrication, energy costs. And I would like to take care of the budget update before we get into the rest of the meeting. So do I have a motion?
Your honor, I move the city council amend the two thousand twenty-six general government operating in capital budget by decreasing the police department's operations cost center, heating fuel account number five-two-five dot zero-three by thirty-four thousand dollars and the vehicle fuels account number five-two-five dot zero-four by twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars and increasing appropriated reserves in the general fund accordingly.
Second.
Moving second. In the coming. I'd like to thank the department for their work on this. With that, would you please call the roll?
Bradbury?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
Gas?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Pass it, your honor.
Thank you. Moves us on to item four, persons to be heard. Do we have anybody that wish to speak to the council tonight?
Sean, is there anybody on the staff to speak? Can you check that real quick? We have nobody.
Bring just the unfinished business, resolution number twenty-five, twenty-nine, ninety-six, adopting the budget of the, for the year two thousand twenty-six, procreation of general government fund for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-six, proposed, postponed from December second. So we'll open that item for discussion. I think we left off, if I'm not mistaken, with tourism. So we start up with public works engineering, if I'm correct. All right, sound right?
Yes, your honor. I'm happy to start in with public works, but I do want to draw the council's attention back to budget update number twelve, which was following up from discussion from the first budget meeting on November twenty-fourth, yes, twenty-fourth, regarding the information technology department's proposed capital improvement program and their projects for the twenty-twenty-six. Following council direction, I met with staff, both IT director and KPU telecommunications director to see where there might be some areas for collaboration within the IT's twenty-twenty-six post capital improvement program. Some information was presented to council. We do have members of both of those departments here tonight. We do have a short presentation. If the council would like to receive that and be able to ask any questions and receive answers from our two department heads on the progress thus far on that capital improvement program.
Sounds good.
I will call Brock and Colin up with you.
Brock, head of director of IT.
I'm Colin Tomberg. I'm one of the senior system administrators here.
So we transmitted a memo and then this presentation that's also part of that. Trying to provide some background into why we were asking for the six CIPs for storage of his servers. Colin went through this week and tried to gather a ton of information together to make it as clear as possible to you and make sure you understand why we're pushing for twenty-twenty-six, not twenty-twenty-nine or twenty-twenty-eight. And just wanted to let you know, we've been working closely with KPU to try to figure out where cost savings can be made there. So as outlined in the memo for myself, so I'll let Colin.
You go to the next slide there. So currently. Apparently, I need to go to the next slide. In twenty-twenty-four, we were, what we were in a, was called an oversubscription event with our host. We were running basically at capacity. So if we had any kind of disaster or any kind of maintenance was required, we were required to bring down one of our servers. So in this year, we asked for a CIP to increase our hosting capacity by two more servers, which increased our, what they call virtual CPUs, up to seven hundred and twenty. You can go to the next slide, please. The reason we were asking for the extra capacity was this, the reason. In a failover event on the left, you can see our daily operations, we were at capacity. Once we failed out one of the three hosts that we had, the blue would go over our virtual server capability and we would be in oversubscription. That would cause New World to crash, slow down. Services across the city would either become few or just not respond. So we weren't able to do any work during the day. We were always having to do shutdowns at night. So hoping the new ones help. Go ahead and next slide. This is where we currently sit as of today. We are running about fifty percent of our virtual capacity. Going through twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven and up to twenty-twenty-eight, we are actually fine as of today with our projected server growth. The server growth is just due to new applications that we're installing, request for more performance, whatever the city decides for an application that they need to deploy. In twenty-twenty-eight, we already have a CIP plan to add more hosting capacity. If we do not, we would be starting to get back to oversubscription error where we definitely would have issues in twenty-twenty-eight. And if nothing was done in twenty-twenty-nine, we would be back to projected being oversubscribed and to having mass slowdowns across the network. You go to the next slide. The reason why we're asking for the CIP is we're looking to do what's called a virtual desktop initiative. Go on to the next. The big thing we're trying to do is to start virtualizing people's desktops and users across the city. This will allow us to actually save money across. With the new host that we're asking for, we can go further into BDI using Esri, AutoCAD, high-end workstations that cost the city the actual, a large amount of money per year to maintain. It also opens us up the ability to have these desktops available via web browser, going back to what we used to offer several years ago. But technology changes, maybe we're no longer able to. Go on to the next slide, please. Currently, the city spends on average about thirteen hundred dollars for a standard user desktop with no monitor, no keyboard, no mouse. Once we get into trying to do an Esri class workstation, which is what public works mainly uses, we're over about four thousand six hundred dollars per machine. A lot of those can actually go above five thousand, depending on the specs that the department is asking for. So just on average, if you look at the finance here in the first floor, there's about fifteen computers with a requested schedule of a quarter of the machines per year. That's three to four. If we can implement BDI just for finance, I could save that department about five thousand dollars here. If we could do that for public works, we're hoping we can do two to three. That could be seeing a savings of about twelve thousand dollars per year. And that's just year one. That's just in year one. Without the CIP for the new host servers, we will not be able to do Esri workstations. The reason that is because they require a physical card. We cannot fit into our servers currently. Our goal is to virtualize up to ten machines a year, which would be what this is not doing the Esri. But if we could do ten machines of standard desktops, we project we could save about thirteen thousand dollars a year every year going forward. The problem we run into is that we start down on our current host that we have today. We could get through twenty-twenty-six, but we would probably be in an oversubscription again, where if we had to bring one down for maintenance, we would exceed capacity in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Do I go to the next slide? With the CIP, we're hoping to increase our server capacity to almost a thousand cores. Part of that is we're hoping to take two of the oldest servers, which are due to be replaced in twenty-twenty-eight and move them out to our disaster recovery site located up at KPU. Those servers are past their expected lifespan and they should be replaced. But with the new servers, we can start doing AutoCAD and Esri machines. So we could be looking at savings of about eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars per year in year one. And the servers should suffice for our standard growth with BDI until twenty-twenty-eight, when the next CIP expansion is projected.
That's a good question here if you're in the presentation.
Yes, sir.
So you're talking about these extra servers so that we can reduce the cost of buying new machines, updating machines, all this kind of stuff. What is the cost per server?
The estimated cost of each of these servers is about, just for the hardware, is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars each. So that's what the CIP is, what, two hundred? Two forty.
That includes operating system licensing, hardware, and I think was corporate at ninety thousand.
Yep, and warranty extensions to get them out for the five years.
That's a five-year warranty on that.
So the savings you're talking about in machinery?
Per department.
Per depart, right.
Yeah.
So but when you add the added cost of the server, I'm just wanting to make sure that we're talking apples here. It's an actual saving net.
So it's the savings for the department, but not over the actual cost of the server. If you look at this server cost compared to what we spent in twenty-twenty-five, these are only marginally more expensive, but the cost does go.
There was a cost savings over time as we virtualized more systems. The goal was to get the initiative going. Year one, you won't see as much savings. Two, three, four, the savings grows because we can virtualize more machines as they age out from the department. As someone's computer fails, we pop in a much more inexpensive terminal. Savings found, because you didn't have to spend the money out of their computer budget to replace that. So you're, you're, you're cutting their computer expenditures, you know, virtually in half.
And there's also another factor in the savings that can be considered with the EOC, for example. They had made a request to start buying Esri machines in case of a disaster here in the city. That is a, you know, just a five thousand dollar computer sitting on a shelf, being used maybe once or twice a year. Using BDI, there is no expense to that machine because it's eaten up. It's part of the server. That licensing, everything with that server allows us to just spin up a virtual desktop in a matter of minutes, instead of taking weeks or months to get a piece of equipment here and catch a cab. So for the fire department, they would need to say have ten thousand dollars worth of desktops sitting on a shelf, not being used at least once a year. They can just go to a web browser and turn it on.
Your honor.
Yes, okay.
Now, with this explanation, with this savings for a department or for a unit, what about the licensing fees?
The licensing fees are perpetual. They're part of the machine. They never expire until the machine is retired.
So when we buy a host server, we buy it with the data center license. It covers that machine along with all the virtual machines that run within it. So we've centralized the licensing. We buy one license, everything in the box is covered. The more we can grab in the box, the more advantageous the licensing becomes.
Follow up, your honor.
Yes, your name.
And how long is, do you have to license it every year?
No, it's perpetual. We, if we don't have to buy subscription, we buy perpetual. So it's, it's a one-time cost. That's it.
And how long is the host for the server? What's the life of that?
We push the servers five to six years frontline production, then a few additional years of secondary off-site replication. That's when it's out of warranty. We could see seven, eight years of life out of a server with this licensing, but the caveat to that is if Microsoft stops supporting the operating system that we paid for, like Windows ten recently went out of support. Everyone had to upgrade to Windows eleven. If they stop supporting, say, server twenty-twenty-five, which is what the CIP is for, we would have to pay for some licensing to get to server twenty-twenty-nine, if that's what the current one is. So we could run it outside of security updates and patches, but, you know, we own, we own the license.
I mean, the question is if the Microsoft or any of the processing systems, say they don't want to update it or they want to go to something else, then you're looking at buying new servers and you're looking at buying new licenses and new terminals.
We generally license the servers with the current version of operating system that's available when we buy those servers. Right now, we have some that are server twenty-twenty-five and some that are server twenty-twenty-two. We have downgrade capabilities with those systems, so we're running server twenty-twenty-two everywhere. As for more online production systems in twenty-twenty-five, it's a cost-free upgrade because we already paid for the licensing. You don't have to license the terminals. It's part of the server twenty-twenty-five licensing with the data center.
Your honor, follow up?
Yes, your name.
The host that we are using now, you say if it goes into oversubscription, you've got to take one off and maintain it. So what's the procedure? If you take one off, you can still run the one that's on?
We don't have to turn off the virtual machines within it. It basically becomes a queue like you're waiting in line. So when, say, New World makes a request to the SQL server to run a process, to run one of the budget bugs, it may have to wait until there is resources available to actually do that calculation. So it just slows everything down.
And slowdowns on the back end for us cause slowdowns within departments or other operations.
Thank you.
And to further just clarify on the licensing, Microsoft tends to license for, in the, how about the life cycles, about ten years for operating systems. So twenty-twenty-five was just released. It's expected end of life is twenty-thirty-five. So any servers that we purchase in the next few years would easily last out into that, would be licensed to about twenty-thirty-five. We wouldn't have to worry about buying licensing until that point, but at that stage, once the servers are needing new licensing, they're probably ready for retirement and be licensed for any one of the new machine.
We're going to move on to the storage array next. This was part of the CIP for hosts because you think the last everything from people's desktops, you need a little additional storage.
So without doing any BDI, our current storage array is actually projected to be fine until about twenty-thirty to twenty-thirty-one. Pure Storage is the company that we're using. They don't want us running at ninety percent. So our projected capacity would be at ninety percent in twenty-thirty-one, just maintaining our current growth with no virtual desktops. Part of what we're looking at with the pure storage is every three years, we have what was purchased as an optional warranty. With renewal of the evergreen, they give us upgraded internals to our existing array and they give us a credit for the original purchase price if we need to expand or get a different array. If we start doing BDI, we could don't get started with existing hosts, but we will very quickly run out of capacity if we talk on the servers. But on the storage array, we would exceed our capacity at the end of twenty-twenty-seven. By purchasing or upgrading our array, which will almost double our capacity, we should be fine once again to twenty-thirty-one with the virtual desktop initiative. Part of the CIP for the storage array is to upgrade it in such a way that if we needed additional capacity, because we are off in our numbers and our protection, we can easily add space without having to go into an extraordinary cost to expand the array.
So on that note, we're fully populated in our current array. We can't just pop more discs in empty slots. So a storage expansion, luckily, we did the evergreen plan that allows us to, again, get the full, full upgrade capability with our current array to a new one. And the new one we planned would have additional slots, so it's a much more portable expansion come twenty-thirty-one. Another thing that wasn't mentioned here was the police department uses a pure array. We'd be able to do real-time replication between those two fans with some additional storage. So it kind of, it adds some additional failover capacity for our nine-one-one systems and police investigations. So there's some public safety. They kind of piggybacks on this expansion also.
Just to talk about that evergreen. It provides all of our software and feature upgrades for the pure. The way they look at the storage rates, if you have the evergreen, there is no feature that they do not enable with warranty. As long as you have the evergreen, you get all features and all software support. Part of that is also non-disruptive upgrades. We can upgrade the storage units for ourselves and the police during the day with no impact to the city. We do it actually all pretty often and it's never been unnoticed for it. If you renew that evergreen, that's when they give you the controller upgrade, which means basically they're giving you a new array every three to four years. And they also then go into on-demand controller, blade, capacity upgrades, whatever you would like it.
And the better green pricing was baked into the original purchase. It was included. I broke it down separately. I think it broke out to about thirty-three thousand a year into the cost. So it's, it's well worth it for them. It was a good choice for the city. It's the last slide. I guess, are there any additional questions? This is just the justification of why we were trying to do, we were trying to twenty-twenty-six and make it as clear as possible.
Brock, I certainly appreciate you coming back with the information, but the reality of it is, a lot of what you talk about, I don't understand, right? So for me, it's about a cost analysis to make sure that we're doing it in the best interest of investment in our technology for the city and the continued operations and how that pencils out. I can see where, say, you can save money with departments because they don't have to buy machines, but then we're adding more money because we got to buy these extra hosts. And I don't know if you, if you buy a host because we go into this, what's the backup system for that host?
We ship the two oldest host, host servers in our system off to site location and that is our backup, offsite backup. And it's a replica. So the idea is we should never be buying new equipment for offsite data center. We always use the out-of-warranty. It's aged out of online production use. We do it at essentially no cost to keep that system up.
Another thing to consider with the cost, if you're talking about cost savings, is manpower downtime. We live in a remote area. Dell does have warranties on all of the machines. It takes about a week to get a part here. Just for example, we have one of the engineering workstations, one of these four and a half thousand, five thousand dollar computers needed a power supply because of the power outage. That was down for three weeks. We were waiting for parts and user then had to end up using just any kind of machine that we have laying around. They weren't able to do their job to the full extent because we don't have the capability of either having one of those machines here due to cost as a spare. But if we start looking at doing BDI, a machine goes down, we just spin up a new one. Being on the back end with the servers, the hardware is higher end, is more robust. It's going to be protected by the generator power, the backups that we have here, the batteries, and then obviously our tape and storage arrays that we do.
And that's why we're trying to host, and so originally built in. It's like giving everybody a backup desktop.
So we, that happens quite often here. We end up losing a desktop machine or a new hire comes on. Another example, that would be some of these vacant positions. Those departments may not purchase a computer until that person is hired with the tariffs and the trade wars that are going on currently. All technology is basically made in China, Taiwan, overseas. It may take us a month to two months to get a machine here just because of the supply shortage on memory. If you guys are watching the news right now, memory and hard drive costs are going up through the roof because there is, you know, issues with tariffs and production. That then starts causing delays in machines being built that are weak and purchased. We end up with a new hire. They may not have a computer for, you know, a couple of weeks, month. If we had, if we wait to order it, we're not, until a position is filled. And departments don't want to normally purchase the machine until the position is filled once again, because they don't want a five thousand dollar workstation sitting not being used.
Offsite storage, let's talk about that. So where is that?
To the KPU data center.
Pardon me?
The KPU data center. We have a rack there with equipment and we have our offsite replicated storage. So it's, it's older equipment that we've aged out of frontline production use because it didn't meet the demands of the daily workload, but it worked fine for an offsite backup and replication.
Okay, and that's going to continue?
Absolutely.
Yes, Abby.
Since we're back on this topic, can you tell me what the upgraded IT network environment, when you say it's in the, on page one fifty-six, the IT area, it says goals for twenty-twenty-six, complete the citywide transition to the upgraded IT network environment. Can you explain that?
We've worked with KPU to provide fiber drops, new fiber drops to all the locations or utilize existing fiber drops. And we upgraded all the network switches at every single location and dramatically increased the reliability and throughput to those sites. So before, we had everybody, if they public works funneling down into a little, a little pipe to get back to the, you know, the main servers. That's expanded, what, twenty-five times? So we've increased the speed at which everybody can load the data, deal with AutoCAD, Esri, get to the things they need.
And are those network switches ours or KPU's network switches?
There are two switches, as they have historically been going back decades. So we replaced them because they met the needs we had. We did evaluate systems with KPU and we had sit-down discussions with them and this was the mutually agreed best option at that time with their engineers.
Mutually?
Yes, absolutely. So they had to provide the fiber drops.
And then can you tell me what the artificial intelligence solutions architect job is?
So that job is a reclassification of our senior programmer analyst position. It was intended to be the senior programming position within the department to provide assistance to the DBA programmer at a higher level because that was the only person we had on staff to train to do new world reports and some data administration. But the primary function was to bring us up to date with automation and trying to integrate systems to work better together. The industry is shifting towards the kind of the AI machine learning automation direction. And I was trying to get us to that point so we can actually find qualified candidates. His job is to work with departments to push forward any sort of automation initiative they have. We don't always have the list of things that each department wants to do, but we'll work with departments like the museum or finance, even more with telecom, customer service, work with any of those, any of the departments in the city to try to bring automation into their workflows and reduce the need for staff time. So if we can, if we can save them having to hire two people to do busy work for positions that don't exist today, that's what we're trying to do. We can't do that without the equipment to do it, but we've, we're doing our best.
Do we have a list of accomplishments or things that they have automated over the year in particular related to that job position for the cost?
I don't have a list in front of me, but there is some stuff we've done for public works. There's some transcription tools we've done internally for the museum. Our department's utilizing it. We've worked with the clerks to try to come up with ways to create automated meeting minutes and actually transcribe historic things. Museum, I believe, is using it to take a whole bunch of recorded data they have and dump out full text transcripts so that they can actually search their audio inventory and develop summaries from that data without having to have a staff member listen to tens of hundreds of hours, I mean, hundreds of hours of audio. That's where we're moving.
He's currently working also on a replacement for the old AS four hundred police system that was never fully replaced because of programming logistical problems. We never had anyone in-house that was capable of recreating the old AS four hundred police program until he came on board. So he's currently trying to digest a couple hundred thousand police records to recreate that system and make it searchable and easier for the police department to look up.
The evidence custodians have to regularly pull up old record data and it's arduous, to say the least. It's, I, I believe it's over half a million PDF files that they have to search through to try to find the right data. And it's not entirely searchable the way it was offloaded from the AS four hundred. I believe there's also been some work done for public works on sewer analysis and generating some metrics there with lots of report data.
Thank you. Jay? Your honor, I've got a few questions. First, going back to the off, offsite server array. There was a talk from your department a while back that you wanted to move it away from KPU to some other site offsite. Is that correct?
It, it was long-term kind of projection planning. I think that idea was to move our primary systems to KPU and then have an offsite not KPU. At the time, KPU didn't offer Norpoint Higgins and, boy, they knew, they now have locations that are not their primary data center. So we can actually utilize KPU for that offsite redundancy.
Second question is, what concerns me or just concern me with what you just told us about your offsite storage or data centers? You can use all machines that are not licensed or that don't have warranties. What is the chance of somebody hacking those machines?
They're all fully licensed. Hardware warranties are the only thing we're missing, which means if a piece of equipment dies there, we have to figure out a way to repair it effectively or cheaply because we don't have that free replacement part. Since they are secondary systems, they are frontline production, we can usually piece them together with replacement parts, especially due to their age. They're much cheaper to find parts for. Software-wise, they're completely up to date, where we generally keep those patched and security compliant and they're, they're secure.
And my final question is, you just promoted somebody to the AI, your senior programmer to AI. And have you, also, I know you came with a request for some EFTs last year. So by doing that or by promoting within your department, how many new EFTs have you hired?
I requested one new FTE. Um, I requested one new FTE, I believe it was eighteen months ago, it wasn't last year. Uh, and the senior program actually retired after sixteen, seventeen years of the city. And we hired the AI architect as a replacement to the reclassified position, I didn't reclassify it until he retired. Um, I waited until post retirement.
Thank you.
Yes, Judy.
Um, I just have two questions, one is about the HBAC replacement. Um, Public Works also has a project like that, are you guys working with them to figure out what the best use of the funds are?
Absolutely, and the funds in the HBAC project for IT were earmarked years ago when I was discussing our aging HVAC system with Mark Gilson. We put a number there, knowing that it was going to happen, and that data has gotten closer and closer. So I did work with the, uh, contractors that came through doing, getting the engineering backups for the analysis to be done with, uh, public boards. In additional discussions with KPU recently, I think the shift may be to move all of our servers to KPU data center in twenty twenty six. There is some operational cost to that, but long term, I think it will reduce the need for an expansive HBAC overhaul within this building. But that's only possible now that they have North Point Higgins and Mountain Point as DR sites, so we can shift resources. Again, collaborative, co-collaboratively, working together to make sure that we're finding the best deal for the city. That opens up some space here at City Hall, uh, we still need some of it, obviously, um, but we're, we're gonna work through that, so hopefully we don't have a large HBAC expense.
Uh huh. Yep.
So from this, I understand then that there's active efforts to continue conversations with KPU and try to find ways that you all can work together and maybe save some money?
Yes, we, uh, Matt and I have had multiple conversations since we last spoke, and, uh, I think we're on much better, much better standing, and we have a better understanding of what we each do. Um, I believe there was some miscommunication in the past, uh, and we didn't realize they did some services in-house that we could utilize, and that's, that's easy to switch to, um, we, we get along with KPU, we just didn't know they provided some services, so.
That's why we have these.
We're working together, we're absolutely.
On these capital projects that you were talking about, um, they're great projects, I obviously in the tech world know that those are important, especially for employees moving around, things like that. Have you gotten quotes from KPU telecommunications on these services versus having to build a system within ours to save us money?
They don't currently do BDI, but we are working with them to come up with some prices of what that would look like. Um, it's a little too compressed to try to do that within a couple of week period here, especially because there'd be, have to be some infrastructure buildup on either side. Um, but we are working with them, and if there are major changes, I think we can come back to you and adjust the CIP as needed, so that it shifts to operational state as a CIP. Um, I mean, we're working together and we're gonna come up with the best solution for twenty twenty six. We're just looking to move forward with this, uh, as is, in the meantime.
So just a couple of comments, not a question really, I, I just want to make sure we're very aware of combat, combatability issues, expandability. We need to be looking at what's coming in finance in regards to new, uh, billing programs, uh, same way with the utilities, uh. Um, if we're getting away from the AS four hundred at some point, there need to be, uh, the ability to work with whoever these providers are that provide the best services that we can get for the, the billing system that we use. Um, I, one, sometime I'd like to see a, a, a utility bill that has some information on my usage and where I'm going with this stuff. Uh, that I see in other communities, that, but like, again, we need a program that can do that, I appreciate that, so I thank you for working with all the departments of the city and, and across the, the divide to KPU to, uh, you know, do in a, in a fashion that serves the community well, and if we can find some cost saving while we're doing it, that's great, so thank you. Anybody else? Thanks, guys. Back to you, Lacy.
Okay. Uh, I can be my phone up. Okay, budget hearing number three, general government continued, next slide. So today, um, Monday, December eighth, we're going to get through various public works divisions and also harbors and ports, and that will conclude general government, um, the council at the last meeting, regular meeting, oh, that's okay, at the last meeting. Uh, elected to have, uh, an additional budget meeting this Thursday, so we will start KPU on Thursday. So kick things off with public works engineering, um, so we have total budget increase for this division a little over seven percent. That's a bit of capital, for the operational increase, it's four point three five percent, so they're within the five percent threshold, there's just a few things that, um, made an increase, twenty twenty six, personnel and services, personnel services and benefits at about four percent. Um, some additional funds for travel and education, um, additional funds for minor capital, and then a fourteen percent increase for inherited potential purchase for engineering, there are no FTE changes for twenty twenty six. The capital requested increased by almost thirty five percent, this is a shared service with multiple funds supporting it. Next slide, please, uh, within public works engineering, we have the building inspection division, um, so that's noted as its own cost center. Uh, we're seeing just not even a three percent increase in their total budget for next year, so that's within that five, five percent threshold. Again, the personnel services and benefits has increased by two, two percent, being one of the bigger expenses, also a shared service. For the engineering, there are just two capital improvement project requests for twenty twenty six. We have the continuation of the dangerous buildings abatement and remediation disposal programs, this is something that we typically do every year. There's also the public works administration building heating repairs at three hundred nine thousand dollars for the total CIP, uh, three hundred fifty four thousand six hundred dollars. So again, almost a forty five percent increase for the vision. Are there any questions on public works engineering for moving on to cemetery?
Um, so we can go, I think, you see, we're looking at some of the capital projects in regards to, or, or at some of these things. Um, I see that there was, um, some, some increase requested, and it showed that the capital expense, um, you know, you know, this is an error, but in twenty five, you had an adopted of two forty five and amended to two forty five. Forty five thousand dollar estimate, then you add some three, three hundred fifty four thousand. On, on page, uh, three oh four, under the engineering narrative, or, uh, front page. That's the one that's forty four point seven three percent increase. How, how'd that happen? What are we doing there?
So, um, so last year for the, are you talking about from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six?
Yep.
Yep, so for twenty twenty five, we still had the same, um, allocation essentially for, um, especially, you know, we, we had a much higher allocation for the dangerous building abatement and foreclosed property remediation program, so, um, it's just a smaller amount in, in twenty twenty six. Um, for the heating repairs, this is for the actual cost of those repairs in twenty twenty five, just for the design of that project, so this is for the actual six.
So we've had with the engineering building out there a tremendous amount of problem with the system, and I know that getting away from the pneumatic controls hopefully can help us on this. But at one time, we even looked at a review to see if heat pumps are even more efficient than trying to stand up, uh, a full HVAC system that it has a holding water tank or anything like that, they're not very efficient in, in cost of operation, so. Uh, this is, will get us through for a while, but are we still looking at anything like a conversion up there, do you know?
I don't know, your honor, and I would ask that our public works director come forward and give some more detail on the project.
Sure, good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, Seth Brackey, public works director and engineering manager. Uh, so specific to this capital project for the HVAC system for the public works, uh, admin building, twenty nine thirty Tongus, where our offices are, it's an old system. And it's pneumatic controlled, so, um, you have a situation where you have heat where you don't want it, and cold air where you do, you know, don't want it, so you're just, you lose control of the building's heating. Um, that results in inefficiency, uh, heating areas you don't want heated, and vice versa, so. Uh, we think right now we're executing a design with a design consultant, and this project is to uh, get rid of the old pneumatic system, go to a modernized system.
So Seth, it has a control system that we're gonna modernize, what is the system itself looks like in regards to age and uh, uh, value in regards to moving forward, how long do you think that thing's gonna be around?
Oh, what, how long will the new system last?
No, not, not just the control system, the heating system itself.
Oh, okay, so we're, we're not there yet with the design, we don't have the new system picked out yet. And that's something that we'll have to come back to council for award when we get the design completed. So this is the estimate, um, and that'll come back.
Abby and then Dick.
Um, I was wondering, um, did we talk to the USDA about any heat pump grants? I know at Southeast Conference, I was approached by, uh, um, USDA about it, um, and so I just didn't know, um, if we kind of went out for a little bit of help on this project. Don't know if anybody, did we apply?
Councilmember Bradbury, I know that we have, uh, we're going for heat pump grant, uh, award, um, mainly geared towards residences and assisting residences for heat pumps. I'm not aware of any program that assists municipal buildings, uh, but if there is some out there, we're definitely going to, to look at that.
And then my second question is, on the abatement, you mentioned that, um, we didn't use all the funds that we had intended for in twenty twenty five, and I was wondering if there was a, was there just not buildings out there, or, like, what was the reasoning behind that? I thought we had a long list.
We do, yes, so first on that, on that list to accomplish is demolishing the old case kitchen, um, right along Tongus, it's something that drive by every day, we want to get that thing demolished, uh, for the community, so we weren't able to get there with permitting, but we're getting very close, uh, we've had conversations with the Army Corps of Engineers. They're the entity that's been hanging us up there, and I think we're very close to getting that permit and being able to tear that thing down in twenty twenty six. So the funding that we had allocated, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand for it was one eighty last year, and we used a portion of that for, uh, a house on First Avenue that we tore down. And the remainder we'd like to roll over and utilize in twenty twenty six, because we're gonna get that building down.
No follow up, your honor, how many, um, are we looking at taking care of in twenty twenty six besides the one you speak of?
Uh, so currently, that's the only one that is, we're planning for, uh, if there are others that need demolished. We'll get on them next.
Who decides that, city?
Not you.
Well, I'm just curious on who that person, who decides?
Or the building on Tongus that was directed by council to get that demolished.
I'm just curious.
Dick.
Uh, we do have, we do maintain a list, Councilwoman Bradbury, um, and we kind of, we actually went through, um, a meeting earlier this year to kind of try to rank those or create a ranking system, um, and it's, it's difficult, because as I think I may have mentioned at the time, some of those houses, um, are not abandoned, people live in them, and people who live in them are in fact the owners, so it, it's not, even though we may deem the building um, a threat or in need of remediation, if the owner owns it and is living in it, we don't have the authority to make them leave their home, so we, we reach out to those homeowners, we try to have conversations, we develop plans to remediate that property whenever we can, um, because we certainly don't want to force anybody out of their home or any tenant out of their home. Um, but we do have a list of something that we revisit often, and then we have funds like this, we do try to chip away. I will say that the, the forty five thousand that's here, that's not very much. Um, we're talking about a full demolition of a building, that doesn't go very far, thank you.
Yep. Dick.
I guess what I'm looking for is some timeframes, now, talking about the heating system at KPU, I call it KPU building, but, um, you're talking about corner design, you're still talking about selecting a system, you're talking about this, but when are we actually gonna see the job done? Give me a timeframe.
Yeah, Amanda, would you like to come up specific to that? So, I'll let you take, yeah, the question for timing on when we can get it executed.
Sure, Amanda Robinson, Assistant Public Works Director and Project Manager. Um, so we have just awarded the design with respect engineers, um, in the past month. And they, um, stopped by last week to take a look at the system, and so they're getting started right now with design. And we anticipate it taking probably about three to four months to get through the design process, this one is very complicated. The budget that we have here is not gonna be able to replace the entire system, um, we're gonna have to keep the air handling system in place, this will be mostly just to handle the pneumatic controls. So, um, I would see that we would probably be able to award the contract probably mid summer.
For the construction work?
With construction happening probably around late summer.
And if we, you said you don't have enough money to do the whole job like the heating or something, what? Do we need, do, do we need to debu, do we need to be doing more? Or is this a break, good breakpoint?
Ultimately, I would be great, but, uh, at this point, with this budget, it would just be to, to change out those pneumatic controls.
Are, are these folks that doing the design on the current piece, would they be doing the design on the next piece?
They would be.
And is it gonna be designed already? When they're done, or they just, they're gonna stop with?
That's what we're looking into right now, um, we'll see, since we're just at the very beginning of the design stages, we're kind of talking about what we want to do.
And if we were to do the work, would it be better off doing it all at once, to doing it piece, two, in two parts like we're set up?
Love to do it all at once.
Again?
I would love to do it all at once.
No, is it, would it be, it's best to do it in one part then?
It is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on engineering? Yes, Jay.
Thank you, your honor, uh, to the mayor, to the public works director, page three hundred and twelve. You have a budget for contractual services, software and equipment maintenance services for twenty thousand. Are you working with IT on this project, or what is this for?
Okay, at the page three twelve.
Yeah, six thirty five point oh four.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so for contractual services, uh, that's, the majority of that is, uh, work with, uh, Esri and AutoCAD products. Um, and so it's something that we do work with IT on, and it's basically a yearly cost that we have to go through.
So it's an interdepartmental cost?
This, this, this is cost, we pay a vendor, uh, for those services, uh, but we do get Uh, but we do get assistance from IT from, you know, in carrying that out.
I'm, I'm just a little confused, IT just told us that, uh, you know, they'll have the SRE, they'll have the virtual terminals. And then I see here that we are going outside.
So. Go ahead, Seth.
Yeah. So this is for, um, you know, a little bit different, so this is expenditures for maintenance agreements for. Licensed software systems, including AutoCAD and Ezri. Uh, we also use, uh, Blue Beam software, so, uh, these are products that. You know, engineering uses on a day to day basis, so this is the licensing cost for those products.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah, uh, six oh oh point oh two, fifty thousand professional services, engineering and architectural services. Can you clarify or expand on that, please?
Sure, sure, so, um. Public Works gets to be a catchall for a lot of different departments. It's something that we are okay with, we get a lot done, uh, so for this specific item. Uh, you have asbestos clearance monitoring, architectural services, uh, in support of the other departments.
Hey, and then, uh, seven ninety point two six, thirty thousand dollars, minor capital outlay, computer printers and copiers. Do we still need them with, uh, the systems that IT is talking about?
Yes, this would still be a needed item, uh, covers, uh, like field laptops, um, tablets, uh, things that we're using that. Are a little bit separate from, um. Well, I can't say for some of the desktop items, yeah, we would see a savings there.
So you'll see a savings in that thirty thousand?
Uh, I think, uh, we haven't discussed it with Brock yet as far as which machines we would be able to, yeah, please.
Brock, I'm glad you're here, so if the CIP moves forward and we're able to start deploying VDI machines, they would absolutely see a savings for those, but. They still need the budget for them in twenty twenty six, because we don't know where everything will end, uh, deployment would happen.
So, uh, uh, what I'm hearing, so I, you don't think that the ID terminals or the servers will be ready for twenty six?
I do think they will be ready for twenty six, but they may need one day one. They may, you know, a machine may fail in January, you know, January fifteenth, and they have to replace it, so they need to have funds available. They also have a lot of other machines that are not just high-end catfish stations. Field laptops can't be replaced with a virtual desktop because they have to be independent mobile, like Seth said, tablets, printers, uh, plotters are extremely expensive. Um, that is ten thousand dollars plus for a platter, um, on a good day. And shipping is not friendly for large items to catch you hand, so, um, it, it helps with a lot of things besides desktops, yes, it would help. It would be able to reduce that, you should see some savings.
I like it.
One more item. Uh, six on page three fourteen, six hundred point oh one, six hundred point oh two and six hundred point oh three, you have a budget. Of twenty thousand, fifteen thousand and twenty thousand respectively, now is this travel? For training and business, all, are these all three related and do we need all these ones? Talking about sixty five thousand, no, fifty five thousand, sorry.
Yes, uh, so let's start off with six hundred dot oh one, the travel for business. Where we've utilized that in the past is for, um, traveling to, uh, specific meetings with like D E C for the wastewater division. Permitting items, uh. Also for, uh. I don't think we'll have, um, I think the beauty of six hundred dot oh one is if we don't use it. If we don't end up needing it, so the six hundred dot oh two, the travel training. This one we definitely, I, I think definitely need, we have an increased staff, I'm happy to say we're finally back up to. You know, full speed at engineering as far as staffing goes. Along with that comes, uh, travel for training, and then that rolls you into six hundred dot oh three for the actual education. Um, so we're getting our, our crew up to speed with, uh, traffic control training. Training materials, uh, you know, everything you have to do to bring them up to speed.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to, uh, make, we should instruct staff to come back, uh. To us and eliminate six hundred point oh one, because if they say they might, they won't use it. Why is it in, uh, the department budget item?
There's a sec. Want just to have them come back?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Abby.
Um, question through everybody to Seth, um, I noticed in twenty twenty six budget. That you actually removed thirty thousand from moving expenses because I think you are fully staffed. And then we saw the five thousand increase in training, I'm assuming for all the people you hired, is that a good assumption that that's where? You know, you reduced because of that and now you have to offset having.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this question is probably for the finance director. And going through this whole budget here, if I look at what actually was spent in twenty four. I look at what was a budgeted in twenty five, there was a serious jump in everything, is that it? Something that's in the system?
Councilmember Goose, when we're preparing the twenty twenty five budget. If we went back to look at what was in the twenty twenty four budget, we, in twenty twenty four for the twenty twenty five budget, we asked staff to keep things. Stable and asked them not to increase unless it was necessary. So the twenty twenty four is reflecting actuals. But at the time that we're budgeting for twenty twenty five, we're estimating twenty twenty four. But we don't know what those numbers are going to be yet until we get to the end of the year, so. The same thing happens in twenty twenty five, we're estimating what we think we're going to utilize for this twenty twenty five budget, we're doing that in. Departments are doing that in September and August, and we're reviewing in September. We don't, we don't have time to go back and re-review the whole budget in November and December. They may see that there's a savings, but that's a savings and it goes back into the, it goes back into the reserves, it's not, if it's saved, it's not spent. But we're still budgeting based on what we think, what our departments think they need and what they think they'll spend.
Are the numbers that's on these pages for twenty twenty four real?
Yes.
Those are audited numbers. Yep.
Still took a big jump.
Thank you. Anybody else? Moving on. Thank you, Seth.
Okay, we'll move on to the cemetery division.
Will you, did we do the buildings?
Part of all that. So the orphaned and abandoned buildings program, is that what you?
Yeah, I'm talking about the building inspector, the building official.
Yep.
And.
We did do that.
grade of assistance, your honor. Yeah, I'm sorry to go back to this, but I'd like, uh, do we really need three employees for that department?
Councilmember Mathani, I can, um, defer to Seth, but I would say absolutely, we need three people for that department, they all serve different functions, um. Council is no stranger to some of the many concerns out there regarding climate takes or permitting and inspections. With a team of three people, which is really only kind of recently that we've been fully staffed there. That adds to that backlog, so, um, because the city maintains a fairly robust building code, there's a lot of work to do between. New construction, remodels and renovation, um, inspecting those abandoned and derelict properties, there's a lot of work to do, but I'll.
Yeah, um, thank you, uh, Honorable Mayor, council members, um. We're happy to have this fully staffed and we feel like we're really. Making improvements to our operations there now that we're staffed. Um, one key component that having the building inspector on board does is we're able to train as a future. Potential replacement for the official, building official, or building in that training into the program.
Thank you, yeah, follow up. Uh, so with you being fully staffed, has the backlog been addressed because the community is still? Kind of talking about it?
Yeah, we're doing our very best to address the backlog, uh, and also, I can say we've hit a high limit for permits process this year, so. That's a good thing that shows we're getting stuff done.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Abby.
Are, how are we in the process of automating systems to help relieve the workload on the? Physical staff to try to be able to, you know, use them elsewhere as needed, where are we at on automation and making systems a little bit easier for everybody?
So, uh, a great, uh, increase or a great thing that we have there is we brought on an admin assistant to take off. On a lot more of the administrative load and that's freed up the building official, building inspector to, you know. Plan reviews, get on the field on inspections, not get bogged down with the admin side. Uh, as far as the automation, we have, uh, moved to laser fish forms for some of our permitting. That's something we're going to continue to do in twenty twenty six. Yeah, it's worked good so far.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing and seeing none? Thank you. Move us on to the cemetery?
Yes, your honor, so cemetery division, um, total budget increase is just over five percent and this is attributable to the capital improvement program. Um, operational expense is pretty much flat, um, there are no employees allocated to this division, it is a employee list division. No rate increases are programmed for FY twenty twenty six, but this needs reviewing, um, as I think we've mentioned to the council before, the level of. Improvement needed for the cemetery versus the revenue that comes in is, is very much off balance, I don't think there's ever. Really any reality in, in those two aligning, but I think there's some more work that can be done, um, because the capital improvement list for. For the cemetery is long, we need to meet future needs and growth, um, this is funded by the general fund and also public work sales tax. The capital improvement program has increased just a little over five point five percent. Next slide, please. So capital requests, there are some carryovers from this last year, so we do have carryover for the office foundation stabilization project at a hundred fifty thousand dollars. The cemetery expansion project, which is the largest project, that is carryover, that's not something that, um, that was completed this year at one point one million dollars. There's also a water supply project at twenty thousand dollars and then cemetery grading improvements at twelve thousand dollars. Um, so again, just about a five point five percent capital improvement program cost increase for twenty twenty six.
Abby.
I was cur, I'm glad you mentioned the rates because I was very curious on why we're raising all the rates in all the other departments. Eight percent, that's like our go-to number this year, and why we aren't doing that here? I know, obviously sensitive topic, but I, I just feel like if we're going to raise. Our rates everywhere else, our museums increasing their fee, I just. I just wonder if we should increase like eight percent until we can get a study or however you figure out cemetery rates?
So that is in my department, the rates, and they've not been increased since the eighties, so we are really looking into our rate increase.
Said nineteen eighty?
Yeah, the eighties, yes.
Yeah, in the eighties.
So we are, when this new, um, when the last niche mausoleum was built. The sale of those niches did not even cover the cost to build that building. So we, uh, we've been working with the public work staff to do some stake substantial increases for the cost of. Crypts and niches, we have a backlog waiting for those, we. We are really true, but there's like four, four of us that have been working, but we're kind of waiting till the new. Mausoleum gets built and then we'll just have a overall rate increase on everything.
I would like to move forward that we increase the rates for twenty twenty six at least eight percent to, I mean, we can't just not. Just because that's the number we're going for all the other departments that are other funds. I would like to increase this one by eight percent, I'll even bargain it for, I just feel like we need something to move forward.
Right.
Though with all due respect, I disagree, I, I think, uh. I think we often fall into this trap of, well, hell, we're, heck, we're raising all the rates, let's raise more and more and more, I'm not in favor of just raising things because they haven't been raised in a long time. And also I know a lot of people struggle when, uh, family member passes on, the total cost is very expensive, so, uh. I'm not in favor of just saying, let's raise them eight percent because we're, that's like the new. Standard operating procedure, I think we should stop doing that all the way around, but in this case too, so. For what it's worth, I am not in favor of just picking a number to raise this, this year.
Yeah, and then get.
I guess what I'd like to, if, if, I mean, instead of saying eight percent, like with the new mausoleum, what the cost is and what. What the projected raise would be. Um, I know that raising rates on this is tough on most people, but I, I think it should also be based on what it would. To cover the cost, not to make profit.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, your honor, I, I, I do think that we should take a full review of these rates, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to read. Increase them by a number that's chosen a little bit arbitrarily, I'd like to see some data, but clearly. If the city's losing money on construction that we've made in order to improve the site, then we're not charging enough, and I do recall, uh. Certainly not specifics, but I, I do believe that the last time we discussed these rates, we came to the conclusion that they were well below its current market. And if, we haven't seen an increase since the eighties, it's, and if we're losing money on new construction within the. Department, then it's definitely time for a review and most likely an increase.
Interesting, we're talking about this. So I went out and looked online, compared our rates to what Juno is, because that was the easiest one to find online and, and they're all variable all over the place. But in Juno, a crypt or a niche runs, the basic one is fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, for a primitive niche, if you do, they have the opportunity to put them inside of a building. And that goes way up, eight thousand to fifteen thousand, we're charging three hundred and fifteen dollars, we can't pay for the next project at three hundred and fifteen dollars. And we don't want to make much profit, what is it now?
The niche is three hundred and fifteen, a, a crypt for a full casket is sixteen hundred.
Yeah, sixteen hundred, and then, uh, the burial plots, uh, in, it's a thousand bucks for eight, ten. And, uh, direct burial in Sitka is a thousand to seventeen and Los Angeles two thousand seventeen, which, we're well behind it, and it's just a matter of fact, and I agree, we need to do. A review and comparison and come back with a realistic number. The cemetery is run by the city, but it's, it's not a, um. We have, we have to cover our costs, we're not going to be able to cover all our costs, but we got to cover more of the cost of, of the operation of the cemetery so we can continue to do it. Um, and so, uh, it's, it's unfortunate, but, um, you know, uh. There, there's, there's stuff there now that people lot, they're bought their pots, they're gonna, they're gonna be fine, and, and when we, uh, people meet them, then, um. There's going to be an additional cost because the, the, the capital project for expansion and stuff, we got two million dollars in that thing or so. It's, it's expense, it's all this, and so I'd like to see a realistic number in comparison. In regard to services that we're providing as compared to other communities in Southeast and, and see how we can get to an actual cost or comparison. Yes.
With that, I just want to make sure we build it as step increases, the only reason I brought in the eight percent is. Think if we get the reality, it's going to be much higher than that, than eight percent, even if their numbers are ballpark, I just calculated a way off of the eight percent, but. Um, I just don't want us to go from this rate to this rate.
Yeah.
You know, I feel like that's. I know we need to, I'm full support of it, but I just want to make sure we don't go from A to B and kind of make some steps, that's the only reason I was. Eight percent is fairly low on most of, so that was all.
And then, and the proposed capital project for the, the crypts, go ahead and win. What you're. What you're, what you're thinking about that?
The, the expansion, I think, is a, the multi-year project, um. Seth, do you probably know more about this law? So, do you mind speaking through it?
Sure, um, honorable mayor, council members, specific to the capital improvement for the cemetery. Uh, we are, we're looking through the drawings. It's from the vendor cold spring or the new. Structured there and we are getting very close to getting all those comments back to them and then. Next step would be to move to procurement for that, for the building materials and for the construction, so. Our plan is to have that executed in twenty twenty six for that first. Much-needed structure.
Okay. Jay.
Yeah, I mean, I see, uh, these items are carried over from last year's budget. Do you have a timeline? Will this be completed in twenty twenty six?
Yeah, the schedule that, uh, Kara and I went over, uh, earlier today. Uh, we did think we could get the building materials here, the construction contract awarded. And the majority of the structure constructed in twenty twenty six. There may be some finalized items that carry over into. Early the next year, but that's, uh, that's what we plan on.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Let's move to the public work street?
Streets division, uh, so we have a total budget increase of twenty five point seven two percent. This is inclusive of capital requests. The operational increase is five point three percent, so almost complying with the five percent, pretty darn close. Um, again, there's been increases in personal services and benefits at almost six percent for next year and also a little over five percent. These were interdepartmental charges. There are no FTE changes for twenty twenty six. The capital improvement requests have increased almost fifty one percent. And this division is supported by the general fund and public works sales tax. Next slide, please. This is tiny, um, as we get into some of these larger capital improvement programs. I apologize that the typeface is getting really small. Um, so first we have the Rainbird Trail Rock Stabilization. Project at a hundred and thirty seven thousand, replace, uh, the front street and, or, excuse me, the, the front street, replace the front end loader. Two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. The transportation infrastructure project at eight hundred thousand dollars. This is a project that we actually do. Every year to improve, um, streets and sidewalks for safety. Um, and other enhancements. We have the Ketchikan Lakes Road Concrete Segment Reconstruction Project that is carryover, two hundred twenty five thousand dollars. We have bridge repairs and construction and maintenance at seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, Ketchikan Lakes Road, this is the gravel portion. You're actually going to see, um, several versions of this project. Um, the gravel portion repair is at a hundred thousand dollars. We have Park Avenue, Heritage Street revitalization. And flood hardening at two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Harris Street Bridge Replacement, um, fifty thousand dollars. That would be probably just for design, not for the actual replacement. Sales Board Street Bridge Replacement with carryover at a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Second Avenue Reconstruction in the landslide area, there's a hundred and ten thousand dollars of carryover applied to. Is now a three hundred ten thousand dollar project in twenty twenty six. And then we have the Ketchikan Lakes Road Asphalt Segment Reconstruction Project at twenty thousand dollars for. Three million dollars CIP, which is a fifty percent increase over last year. I will pause there for any questions that council may have of Streets Division's budget.
Yeah, yeah, through the chair, um, thanks, Lacy, for this list. Uh, curious about the sales slash gorge street bridge replacement. I know this is. Really being handled by ADOT, if I'm not mistaken, but it has, it's been projected to begin. Again and again and again. I just wonder if we have any sense of status of that project.
Uh, thank you for the question. Uh, so you're correct, Alaska DOT is primary on this project. And, um, it has taken longer to get kicked off than they anticipated. So they have, um. At least one family relocated from a building right along Sales Street. Um, and the latest that we're getting from DOT is that they are, um. They're moving forward, they've awarded it to Dawson and. I'd like to see that thing replaced as soon as possible, just like everybody else. Uh, the dollar amount we have here for Sales Gorge is. A local match. If change orders come up during the project, we're in an agreement with DOT, so. Uh, if changes are needed, we have a percentage of that to cover it. Um, my understanding though is work should kick off. Uh, in early twenty twenty six.
Thank you. So in regard capital projects, we have some pretty big ones that are coming at us. And I just don't know how we're gonna pay them. The Ketchikan, uh, Lakes Road Concrete Project, I know we spent several amount of time trying to keep the. The expansion joints repaired and, and keep that out, but, um. I don't know what the funding source is for seven million dollars when we get to doing that project. And in our present situation, uh. Um, that's a big ask and I don't know how we're gonna move forward with that.
So, your, your honor, I hundred percent agree. Um, this is something that we've been trying to raise awareness with our state delegation. Federal delegation, um, we've, uh, submitted ADEC loans for the. I think wastewater and maybe also water portion of the project. Um, so we're trying to find other, other funding sources. Because you're absolutely correct that once we get to the construction part at seven million dollars, there's no way that, that we can afford that. But I will stress that this is an extremely important road, um, even though there aren't too many residents up there. It does service our landfill, it does service, uh, Ketchikan Lakes, which is our municipal water source. And also provides hydroelectric power. So without that road, we would be in a world of hurt as a municipality. So you're, you're correct that we've been trying to patch it, um, and we'll be continuing to do that for repairs. But it really does need to be replaced at some point in the future.
And right along with that same line is here's our cabinet job. I'm not so sure why we need to replace the retaining wall. I don't think I've heard any updates in regards to a failing retaining wall in that area. And that would be a huge part of that project in regards to demolition and rebuilding that in that particular area. And then you get into, once you start doing the retaining wall, you're down in the trick bed and so then all the permitting and stuff just goes haywire. Um, and so when I look at this ten million dollar pipe, uh, uh, the bright tag on this. I don't know how realistic it is because if it's just that, we're gonna place our water and sewer and drain lines, we can do those from the top and we take it. So if, I mean, I, it'd be really nice if we updated the can of lever sidewalk, all that kind of stuff, but we can't afford it. I'm sorry, it's just, and, and every, every time we put a big project like this in here, it, it, it takes. Uh, a life of its own and you, so now you change from, you know, a budget that is, uh. Grown by five percent, it grows by much more. So I, I, I just wanted to make sure that we're. Uh, it'd be nice to build it all the way from the bottom, but I don't think we need to, because I haven't heard anything that's failing in that wall structure that I know of. Unless, you know, but I don't.
If I may, yeah, I can s- speak a little bit to that. Uh, so the approach that we're taking, um. Is a little bit different now. A, a big concern there would be during a flooding. Uh, the riprap retaining walls there, I think they do, we do have concern about those walls. And how they react to a major flood. And that's definitely a possibility in this. So with the recent declaration of emergency, um, disaster for the Third Avenue Landslide. Um, that does open up. Grant possibilities for mitigation and other areas, including for floods. So that's where we're looking at this Park Avenue and Harris Revitalization and Flood Hardening Design Project. That, uh, we hope then can springboard us into gaining, uh, money from the federal government. For the overall reconstruction. We can show that, hey, these retaining walls could fail during a flood. Then we can work out an agreement for money to replace the walls before they happen. I think we all realize that if you can replace them before a flood knocks them out, it's gonna be a lot cheaper and. If they're damaged by a flood.
Have we seen any movement in that wall?
Uh, we continue to monitor the, especially the, the riprap walls. There's several areas that are concerned, one being just upstream of the Lower Park Avenue Bridge. Uh, so that's with, uh, Ketchikan Creek Falls, just above that, you have the Lower Park Avenue Bridge. And the retaining wall on the Harris side of that abutment, uh, is, has had some undermining in the past. We've applied grout mortar to, to repair. Uh, it's definitely something we want to keep watching along with. Uh, the Harris Street side, uh, up to the Harris.
Thank you.
Your honor.
Yeah, okay.
In the budget, they are projecting three million twenty seven thousand and four for this year in twenty six. Uh, all these projects that we list, what is, how many will you achieve realistically?
Yeah, our goal is to get all of them completed in twenty twenty six. Like, that's, that's what we set out to do now that we're fully staffed. That's, we're gonna do our best to do that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Abby.
Um, a couple of things, but one question I have was kind of related to Jay's. It seems like this, a, a lot of this list is. Stuff that we saw last year that's been not yet gotten to for various reasons, so I just. Kind of along the same lines as his thinking, but I just wonder if, if adding these huge projects is maybe a little bit too, uh. You know, if maybe we shouldn't just condense it a little bit and really focus on some of the ones that have been around a little longer. I mean, I would love to get them all done too, but I think the mayor raised a good point. In the costs, I mean, some of these costs are just. Enormous and I was curious to hear you, um, speak more about the. How much you guys have looked into specifically the Harrison Park thing and it, it sounds like there's some maybe potential could be problems in the future. But to me, that's not something that, where we want to go jumping out for that kind of money, so if we can get a big grant for it, great, but I just. Uh, I hope we go after this list very strong and get it all done, but I just. I just wonder if it's not maybe a little bit too, uh, little bit much, just a thought, I guess, not necessarily a question, but. It'd be nice to focus on some of the ones that have been on there a while though, for sure.
Nick, and then Jay. Yeah, just a quick comment on, uh, Ketchikan Lakes Road, the concrete pads that we're driving over. I just slowed down a little bit. They'll last, they'll be there a long time. For the price we want. Uh, the other one is, is, I guess, this division is really involved in a lot of things other than this right here. You've got to support all kinds of projects in this town. And I'm concerned that. Can you get it all done? I know, I know your intent is because you, you guys got a good bunch of people going, but, uh, you just run out of. You just run out of, of not gas, but you run out of barriers and things stopping you from going, so I hope that we're really critical. On which ones are the priority we work on. Like I say, you've got your fistful right here plus. Every other construction project in town. Jay.
Yeah, your honor, I think we need to direct staff. Bring back a list that they can do and re- realistically achievable than this whole list.
Thank you, Jay, uh. You wanted to come back with a prioritization and that way, um, because I think some of the stuff I see in here is not necessarily always prioritized. And the other thing I don't get out of our capital budget is I don't see how much of it is carryover. You know, so I can't make a, a good estimation of, uh, this new budgeted five point six twenty eight million of that. Um, capital is three million. How much of that is carried over from twenty five and sometimes even twenty four? Uh, and it'd be nice to know that because if these things just stay on the book and we don't get them done, it's an added cost that we have to budget for. And I, I, and I, we, we're carrying, we had thirty eight million dollar budget, a capital budget, we're carrying over sixteen million of that. We're not expanding sixteen million of that. And that's something we have to budget for and figure into our rate structure and everything else. So every realistic dollar that we can save, even if it means that we have to defer some of these, because we know we're not gonna get them done or we don't have the capital for them yet. Um, I think we owe it to, to, to try to figure out a plan, five year, uh, 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 an immediate. A mid and a long range plan for what we're doing, because I really don't think we have that yet. I don't, I don't see it in this document very well. Yes.
Uh, your honor, just to, um. Hope I got them all, but the ones that we have deferred, I tried to get in there if we've deferred it from twenty twenty four going forward. Um, for example, on page three twenty three, Peterson Street, that one was deferred in twenty twenty five. So I'm trying, and then on three twenty seven, deferred in twenty twenty six, and then the amount. So that you can see that. Um, so we're trying to get all those that we're deferring.
So, we, we don't necessarily get a list in this type of order. We got a list here, a capital project that's. And all over the place, right? And I know we got a lot of different types of capital. But if you're color coding them right now, to some extent, if there's a way that we could just. In, in the list itself, define it as being deferred, then we'll know that, okay, this is a project we've talked about, we budgeted for. And we just haven't been able to get it done due to permitting, due to all kinds of things, right? Or just not enough time. So it just helps us make that decision as we set up for the twenty six. Uh, capital budget that we have more information so we can make a, a, a good decision on it. Yes, Abby.
Is that something we could put across all of the capital budgets? Because I, I think you make, it's not just. It's not just Streets Department that, you know, will run into snags or things like that. But also, if we have a fantastic year and money falls out of the tree, you know, we can always pick up. You know, get money in a pot for them to start designing something else because they're like, wow, we're actually, you know, with all the staff, we're hitting, hitting our marks. Where we need to. There's nothing saying that we, just because it's not on this list, like, we can't ask for it and, you know, June or July. If it comes up that we are gonna have. And so I would like to kind of see it across all of the whole capital program to really make sure. And like you said, can we get it done? Is it realistic?
So in some of here, I know that we have a, a replacement plan for our vehicles, uh, uh, and I've seen it in the path. We haven't seen it lately, but. It would be nice for the council, especially anybody that hasn't looked at it before, a list of our equipment and, uh, the date. I think we've had that in the path. And I don't know if it's an easy document to make or not, I mean, I'm not.
Uh, so, sorry, your honor, are you asking like for the twenty twenty six capital requests? The, are you wanting a vehicles and equipment list?
Yeah, I need a bit, I, I don't need it for twenty six, but I'd like to see one so that we have an understanding of our aging fleet or. Where we're at with that kind of stuff. And it doesn't have to happen at budget time right now.
Okay.
But, and, and it would be nice to have before the next budget so that we, we get a better idea of what the department has in rolling stuff and what we're gonna be looking at. Two years, three years, four years, five years down the line. And, and the question I had though, leading up to, in equipment, are we using GSA? We're doing government services administration for a lot of this stuff.
We, we do that when we can. I mean, it depends. We, we always try to, I will not say always, but. More often than not, we look at government pricing in some way, shape or form. So, um, you'll see that when the item is brought in front of the council for purchase. So GSA is typically for used items. So typically what we budget for unless we've determined otherwise is for new, new vehicle or.
Well, so maybe it's not GSA I'm talking about. I, I remember we brought our butter road grader through a program. The state was buying seven of them, we were able to just add on to that.
Yep, so government pricing contracts. So, yep, so when we, we contact, um, a dealer, um, or distributor. Um, we hope that they've done some sort of government pricing because then we can usually get a better deal and then we have, we can also bypass our. Prement process by putting something out to bid. Um, we do this a lot for, for vehicle purchases.
Yeah, I, I think it, it behooves to do that because sometimes you get some really good deals for the process because they find. ten five fifties, right? We can just add on to it.
So that's common for us to use government pricing for uh everything from snowplows, cop cars um and our garbage trucks, and yeah, you find good deals there utilizing that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Your honor.
Yes.
We should break.
We can take a break.
I may be, oh, yeah.
Order, we just finished on the cemetery, I believe it was, and they are now moving to garage. We just got out of streets before we went to garage. Unless there's any more questions in the garden street.
Okay, so moving on to the garage division for Public Works, there's a total budget base of almost six percent of straight. Um, the operational increase is now it's pretty much flat. There are no FTE changes for twenty twenty six. The capital improvement program request has decreased quite a bit by fifty six percent, which is adding to that total budget decrease. Um, and this division is funded by the general fund and public work sales tax and is also supported by enterprise funding through those interdepartmental charges for our enterprise funds that receive services through the garage. There is just one capital improvement project for the division, um, which I think is very worthy. It's replacing a quite historic forklift from nineteen fifty seven. So it's had a long happy life and needs to be replaced.
Your honor.
Yes.
Just a question for the manager.
Yep.
Uh, this equipment that you're replacing, what's the timeline of us getting it?
Uh, council member, Tony, I couldn't say it, I would have to defer to either Seth or
Sure, sure. Uh, council member McConney, thank you for the question. Uh, let me introduce our garage supervisor, Nick, will you come on?
Supervisor. Um, so don't have an actual estimate on delivery once ordered. Um, we've only gone as far as just getting, well, to see estimated cost. But typically, equipment like this would be, I would say, six months to a year.
The reason for my question was the equipment that you have now, will it last that long?
Yes, we we may do with it. We just can't lift it up as high as we want it to to pick things up, but it it'll still make.
Thank you.
So, so Nick, um, what's your plans, natural gas, diesel or electric?
Um, I believe we went with propane.
Okay.
Um, we looked into the electric, it was about eight thousand dollars more. That was gonna be the option because it's batteries. Figured it would have been cheaper, but no, they're more expensive. Uh, running inside a shop, this was a little more stinky. The propane's a little bit cleaner running, so this is mostly used inside the building.
Mm-hmm.
And then pulling step off a truck outside, but then back in to move step around within the shop, so.
Thank you.
So did I see? What, what department was the relight, relabeling of all the breakers and stuff in the?
That's
Not yours?
Yeah.
So here's, here's my problem with that. The the narrative on that tells us that uh the electric block was mislabeled and the breakers are at end of the useful life. And I think this project is scheduled for two thousand and twenty nine. I'm wondering if this is more of a safety issue and it should be moved up in regards to what we're doing here. You know, if somebody throws the wrong breaker or doesn't write breaker, then there could be an issue out there, especially if we have a a situation where somebody has to go to that panel box and it may not be a guy from the shop and if it's mislabeling, it's not, it's not right, and I think we have a problem.
I agree with that. For the most part, we um call electricians to do anything in the parent. You don't miss the the breakers. Um, our emergency generator ran off, it's on transfer switch, it's not related to touching any of those breakers, but that is done by licensed electrician.
Or even if we don't do it here at the budget table, I'd like the manager to look at, because you can have somebody relabel, we can trace circuits, they got circuit processors. You can at least get the labeling right, so we don't have that issue, but I just have a problem when it says that uh they're mislabeled and their paths are useful life, that uh we're putting it off for years. It's just gonna get worse. That would be my.
Yeah, we can definitely bring that back. Take a look at that, bring it back earlier as necessary.
So and and I'll just take it up in this particular place also, um, and it's probably a bigger discussion even than here. So there's an equipment storage shed out back to the public warehouse and it's, it's in disrepair and it needs to be replaced. But we're holding off until we find out what the wastewater division expansion is going to do to us. But in reality, I think that for a long time, we we need to be looking for a different site, the, the shipyard's gonna expand, we're gonna need more stuff for Bailey, we may need I don't know what it is, but I think we'd be short sighted if we weren't looking at centralized services for garage services. All these vehicles belong to the city. And I don't know if there is uh you know, fleet design, um, all that kind of stuff, cross training. Uh, we could have a centralized garage and maybe even a motor pool for some of the vehicles that could be shared between divisions that aren't used on a daily basis. Backhoes, for instance, rubber tire backhoes, they don't get used every day, but uh if we had one in our inventory that could be utilized by any department, they could check it out, it's just a matter of how you go through that building, it's, other people are doing it all over the place. But I think we're short sighted if we're not looking at centralized services and we start to think like that.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Does make sense to have several different shops working on the same city equipment.
Yeah, yeah. So I I just think it 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 might bring some efficiencies and and cost centers that would help us in regards to providing vehicle maintenance and at less cost to the public. But great budget, thank you very much.
Mary?
Yes.
Yeah, a couple of questions, uh. I know that the shop uh does all the work on the vehicle. Now, when you do work on a vehicle, do you charge your time and materials back to that vehicle?
So expand on how they pull those out.
Councilmember crews, um, all but the salary personnel are charged back based on their work, their hours. The supervisor isn't because the supervisor is, in the past, I'm not sure if anything's changed, but in the past, the garage supervisor was supervising in um maybe doing things like ordering were necessarily specific to one vehicle or charging their time to a vehicle. And I I'm sure when there's short staffing, that might be a little bit different situation, but um, but my understanding was that the garage supervisor doesn't get charged, one, it's salary, so that's not necessarily an easy thing to do on the timesheet. Not that it can't be done, but that isn't the typical thing we do with salary personnel.
So if you're saying the salary personnel that do the work, not not necessarily the supervisor, they get charged back to that vehicle number hours they work on it.
The hourly personnel, yes.
An hourly.
Yes.
And then the materials and supplies that go into that, charge back to that vehicle too, and there's two items on here on pages three fifty three and three fifty four, number five fifteen oh one, six thirty five oh seven, six thirty five oh three. I don't know whether those get charged back to the vehicle or whether they get they're just part of the pot.
No, the materials, a hundred percent, services, that might, I'm not sure exactly what is used for services. If it is something that is specific to a vehicle, then yes. There may be services at the garage who points that are not necessarily specific to one vehicle and and maybe
Yeah, it would just seem like the one on on five fifteen oh one, two hundred and thirty four thousand dollars, that's gotta go back to a vehicle at some point in time.
Yes, it is.
And so and then when it goes back, then we've got, we know what the vehicles were or costing us.
Yes.
And then who's paying for that? How how does the, does the police department pay for that vehicle when it gets worked on?
It gets charged via account eight fifty dot zero one, so if you look at the police department's budget, you'll see eight fifty oh one. And that's the cost to the police department for their services.
For their services. Okay.
The only ones that we don't are the public works department vehicles because it's all public work, so those don't, we keep track of it, but we don't charge it back to public works because it's all public works department.
So Michelle, if I'm correct, uh, outside of the public works department, it's uh cost plus twenty or twenty five percent. Cost plus twenty five percent. Anybody else?
Your honor.
Yeah.
Uh, just going back to your comment about efficiencies, you know, I've sat at this table a long time and during budgets, we always have these different ideas, but they seem to die here. So how would we move forward um to take a look at those efficiencies and do what I've been talking about?
That's up to the vice mayor.
Oh, well then, okay, let's rock it. That's pretty easy, it's up to me, no, but seriously, how would we move forward with this? And if we take a look at it, see if it's gonna work, because it makes sense.
I think after the first of the year, we can can probably look at some examples where that might work. Um, I know Porch Service does that type of stuff.
Oh, you mean a working capital fund on vehicles?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's done here, it's done a lot of places.
And they also do centralized services, right?
They, and they do centralized services. I mean.
And who would, who would look into that?
So just a couple of thoughts, um, your honor and for the council, if we're I think there's perhaps some different accounting things we could do, um, and I can discuss that with Michelle, but if you're talking about centralizing services, so having essentially one garage for both the city and KPU, um, there's a lot of considerations that I don't have answers to that would need to be looked at, such as where such a facility would go. We don't have any land um that I'm aware of currently, neither of the garages could be expanded to include the um, the workload, the personnel, the supplies of the other, so we're looking at a whole new site, so that's probably involving land procurement. Um, also, I think there'd need to be some sort of an analysis of um if the number of personnel we currently have uh between the two divisions is sufficient for the enhanced fleet. I will tell you that both garages maintain an insane load of fleet, both rolling stock and equipment. Um, I think currently it's insufficient, and if you're combining it while there are efficiencies, I think you still need to look at if personnel is adequate. Also, you're moving from one collective bargaining agreement to another, um, so you will have increased personnel costs because people are not going to want to go backward and pay, so there's a lot of different considerations. And we're talking about centralized services, which isn't to say it's not a great idea, but it will come at a cost, I think. Long term, there'll be efficiencies, but initially, there's going to be a pretty major startup cost. I don't believe with everything else that we have going on that this is probably something that staff could take on, but I defer to Seth. I would rather see a third party come in and provide some sort of an analysis.
And this is, this is something that ten year plan.
Yep.
But I I see the footprint at public work shrinking.
Oh, absolutely.
And both garages are deficient in in uh design and concept to, you know, maintain the number of vehicles that we gotta maintain. And we're a twenty four seven operation to some extent, and we only have services for eight hours a day, so please to fire all those guys go without or unless there's an emergency call out. It's just a
No, I think it's a wonderful idea, um, but it's definitely, I think, something that's a a long range, a longer range plan.
Thank you. Yes, Abby.
Um, we don't have to pick a timeline now, but after the first of year, I would like a timeline of when we could sit down and actually talk about this because it, I think it goes beyond the garage when you talk about shared uh equipment and instead of giving every department vehicles that might only use them once a month, you know, looking at a shared place where whenever they could check them out or whatnot, so I think it goes much beyond, further than garage. I know it's a lot of work, but if we don't start now, we're gonna be talking about it in ten years, same. Mayor, you're here forever, you have three terms.
All right. Anything else on the garage? Thank you. Raise Billy May.
Okay. Building maintenance division, so we have a very large chunk in the total budget, um, it's increasing almost two hundred and nine percent, this is due to a large increase in the capital improvement program. Operational increase for the division um has also increased, it's at almost thirteen percent. This is being driven again largely by personnel services and benefits, but also increased the platform service, and I think this is mostly the work and building O and M program. There are no changes to FTEs for twenty twenty six. Um, again, the capital improvement program has increased nine hundred percent. What is really at the the root of that is that city hall HVAC replacement project that we were talking about earlier at almost two million dollars. Um, and this division is funded by the general fund, public work sales tax, and also the community facilities development fund for capital improvement projects. Next slide, please. And there are just two capital improvement projects slated for twenty twenty six. So the first is uh the building maintenance vehicle replacement at a hundred thousand dollars to replace one of the vehicles for the division that are get heavily used. Um, and then again, that's the hall HVAC replacement project of twenty nine million. So a nine hundred percent total increase for a nice round two million dollar budget in twenty twenty six. Any questions on operations or the capital improvement program?
Yep. Ready?
Um, we've kind of hashed this out a little piece by piece over time, but uh, again, I, when we're looking at deficit spending and we're looking at uh, as we say, needs versus wants, uh, and especially looking at this on paper now and seeing it with your eyes. I I just don't think there's an appetite in the community for this city hall HVAC upgrade, so I don't know if anyone else has any opinions on it, but if we're up me, I'd like to scrap that, to be honest, I just, I understand there's lots of things that we want, but uh it's not a priority when we're in the situation we're in, in my opinion, so I'm curious what are the other things?
So I guess we'd look for an explanation of the condition and that's in and exactly why we have to replace it or upgrade it, whatever we're we're doing here.
So, your honor, I need to call on the public works director again, um, I'm gonna get the figure wrong, but I will say as the council recall earlier this year, we did seek um council authorization to continue design for this project. Um, so I believe we're getting close um with finalizing that design with the anticipation of doing the project in twenty two six, but I'll turn it over to Seth to speak more about the specifics on the project.
Sure, thank you. Uh, this is one that's been on the list for a long, long time and is needed uh to ensure, you know, that the workspace for the staff here is in working order, so with that, I'd like to bring up Amanda, some, um, we're, we're very lucky at Polk Works to have a licensed architect now on board in Amanda, and um she's got extensive background and we've been bringing HVAC projects uh forward and getting them completed, so with that, I'll turn it over to Amanda on this one.
So the city hall HVAC system is aging and um currently uh building maintenance has had trouble with boilers and the aging system and finding for the, for the boilers and um the different uh systems here in the city hall. Um, so it's, it's just becoming harder and harder to maintenance the aging system, and it's going to continue to be harder and harder to maintenance this aging system. The aging system, and it's going to continue to be harder and harder to maintenance this aging system. And so the plan is to um, you know, take out the oil boilers. And replace them with heat pump units up on the roof. And it'll go to a modernized system that's easier to maintain and replace. As as we we go along.
Generally.
Just out of curiosity, that heat pumps, uh, is that electric though?
They are, yeah, it will be an all electric system.
So then the cost of heating oil, it, can you kind of?
I don't have the figures. We are going to have um, an estimate with the um. With the design, and so I can ask the estimators to see if we can possibly get some kind of figure that would. Um, show the difference between the oil versus electric.
I can, I can somewhat take a stab at that. So for the, for the fuel oil. Our boilers here for city hall, it's about. Uh, ten thousand to twelve thousand dollars a year, just some diesel up in. So it's significant.
Yes, I would just like to put something out there for everyone to consider that we are talking about huge electric rigs too. So we're not gonna like, we're not. Or increases is what we keep being told we need to do. So uh, I just wanna keep that in mind as we compare costs at whatever the electric. Costs would be now, if we go with the plans we've been presented, it's gonna be way higher in the, in the future too.
Thank you. Okay.
Through the mayor, uh. Current boilers and the current system here in this building is running, right? It has been maintained, correct?
It is running and it has been maintained. Um, the controls for it are also uh, an issue um. Similar to Ted Ferry, if um, there's a proprietary system. That if you update the JavaScript on it, you will lose. Control of your, of your boiler system. And so we're also up against that kind of issue.
Reason my question that is because our finances are in a tough situation. And our public works, our engineering crew, architects, everybody has done a great job keeping the system going. I'd like to see the system continue to go because we cannot afford the one point nine million. It's not realistic and I. The timeline, do you think this project will be completed in twenty six? That's the other question. I mean, we have a three million dollar draw on our reserves. We haven't balanced our budget and we keep. Having items in the budget that we realistically cannot touch.
Kelly.
Uh, this project, I believe, has been on the books since I first came on council in twenty fifteen. And. Just doing the math on cost of fuel versus um, electric, I'm betting we're gonna save money. Um, how, our windows are also up to date, right? For keeping heat in. Or do we still have old windows? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so they're, they're pretty efficient windows.
Um, I mean, just a projection, it'd be nice to kind of get an idea what they would project the cost of electric for this building versus. What we've been paying out for uh, stove oil. Um, I know that I just put an HVAC system in my house. And in three months, it's been thirty dollars versus four hundred. A month in stove oil when it gets really cold.
Abby.
I have to agree, one point nine is um, a hard pill to swallow at the moment. Um, I understand it's needed. And I know the answer is probably no, but I'm just gonna ask anyways. Is there any way to phase this project in so it's not one point nine and kills our. Citizens now, like, I know it'll probably cost more money if we do that, but I'm just throwing out all options on the table.
It will cost more money to phase it in, and I, I, I don't think it would be feasible for this building. It's a, it's a really unique building. Um, just the structure of it. And so we really do have to, we're making new chases to. Bring the lines up through and they have to come from the roof all the way down. And so it would be really disruptive. And so I don't, I don't see that happening.
So this project would be able to utilize the same duct system?
They would, um, they would not, it would be mostly ductless.
Okay. Yes, Dick.
So will this system make that room over, be behind me, be warm? Well, I'm like, uh, over across the way. This has been sitting here since. Early in my time on this, that we did our council too. It's probably time to get it done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I echo Councilmember Coos and other statements that have been made here. Yes, the one point nine million is a bitter pill to swallow. But knowing the timeline and this has been pretty perfected. That's one consideration because we, we all know that these installations, the equipment involved, it never gets cheaper. And if, if the work's gonna have to be done at some point. I'd rather do it for under two million than two, two and a half, three million. The other thing that I worry about, especially if we continue to defer, especially with a system that's hard to maintain. Is that we get to a point where there's a total failure of that system, especially in the winter time. I mean, I know we had a bit of a scare with the servers with I, the IT department. We had malfunctioning. Uh, system that was unable to keep them cool properly. I don't want us to find ourselves in a position. Where we have to spend a tremendous amount of money very quickly because we haven't planned. And there's been planning going into this replacement. For a long, long time. I think we just need to swallow that bitter pill and get this work done. That's my view on it.
So you brought a good point. Does system help cool the server room?
It will. It's part of the plan is to have a, um, what Brock was hoping for, um. An air to water system for the IT room as the primary. And then what they've put in now is their kind of um. Emergency as will be their backup. So we'll keep the system that they've just put in, and that'll be the backup. And then we'll add this air to water system that will be um, more adequate for the servers.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mayor, may I add?
Yeah.
If, um, what Brock brought up tonight, if those servers end up moving, which is what I understood, if there's a potential for that. Then that. Uh, if the servers move, then that portion wouldn't be needed, right?
Okay. Anything else?
Your honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone the city hall HVAC system, uh, remove it from the twenty sixth budget.
It has moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Singing?
No.
Gage?
No.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Finnegan?
No.
Gas?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
Booth?
No.
That fails on the forty three.
Thank you. So anything else on? Building make? I ain't seen none. Let's move to solid waste.
Okay, tiny print again, I apologize. Um, so solid waste um, is supported by. The Solid Waste Special Services Fund. This is a revenue generating fund, so not quite a price fund. Um, we do have a proposed rate increase of nine point five percent in twenty twenty six to cover capital improvement. Disposal rate increases um, with our contractual carrier. And then also personnel for bargaining agreements. The fund balance for solid waste, I'm happy to report is compliant. Um, but it does not meet the added um, almost million dollars that is needed for our landfill closure. So it does meet our standard um, fund balance policy, but it does not meet that for the landfill closure. Yeah, we are still relying on um, the deficit of two point eight three, almost eight four thousand dollars. Out of reserves for. Operations and capital in twenty twenty six. The total budget increase for next year is almost fifteen percent. Um, the total operational increase really varies by divisions, anywhere between about eight and twenty six percent. And there are again, some things that are, are adding to those. We have personnel services and benefits which have increased. Seven percent. Seven point three percent is attributable to general supplies, and I think this is mostly uh, vehicle maintenance materials. We have fifty nine percent increase in permits, licenses and fees. This is bank and merchant things, um, because we do um. Eight transactions for, for solid waste payments um, over credit card. Uh, we have a sixteen percent increase in contractual services. This again is for our disposal services for um. With uh, our regional disposal services contractor. And also seven percent increase in interdepartmental charges. There are no changes to personnel in twenty twenty six. And the capital improvement program has increased almost fifty percent for twenty twenty six. There are just five projects for the division um, in twenty twenty six. We have a one ton vehicle replacement, a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Um, a hook truck replacement, which is a very expensive item, um, but very much needed. This vehicle's twenty two years old, so. Um, its time is due. I believe we do want to hang on to it for backup. After we had the replacement, that's a four hundred thousand dollar purchase. There's also a forklift replacement at a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, the continuation of deploying bear resistant trashcans at eighty thousand dollars. And then cover generation, which is a project that um, we budget for every year. Five thousand dollars. This is again, a fifty percent increase for their capital improvement program for last year. Happy to take any questions on operations or capital.
Oh, let's see here. So if you just look at the numbers here, when they look down here, suppose eleven point eight percent uh, increase in disposal. And um, according to our contract, our disposal rate goes up by two hundred and forty eight thousand and would bring it down to. We subtract that from that increased number, it's only ninety four thousand, it's three point eight percent. So. Majority of that cost is in our. Contract with.
Correct.
Our disposal company, correct? And it, they have a, they have a. Standard. Cost of living agreement in regards to our escalation in that.
For the, for the disposal contract? I think it's, is it five percent escalator each year?
Five and a half.
Five and a half each year, yeah.
Thank you. Um, anything on uh, any of the. Recycling equipment and those trucks like that, hook lift truck, their multi-use truck, they use it also for a dump truck. As well as picking up all the garbage and recycling boxes. That are uh, spread around the community.
There's more question on that. Quickly from Robert, I seem to remember that being on the list last year. Is this that truck that did not get replaced or is this a new one? If I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong.
On the mayor, um, and. Councilmember Gas, uh, which vehicle? On the hook truck? Um, with that, let me bring up, introduce Brian Gilson, Solid Waste Supervisor.
So, yeah, two A, our, our large hook truck was on the list last year to be replaced. It was uh, bumped to the twenty twenty six. Um, it's still needing to be replaced. We're still waiting on an engine rebuild for it until we have a new truck. We can't take it offline to do that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Jay.
The five hundred and ninety thousand for machinery and equipment in general, what is, is that covering?
Which, which account?
It's five hundred and ninety thousand on page three ninety seven, the expenditure, my activity.
I can, your honor. That's the total of four hundred thousand, the one hundred and ten, the eighty thousand. It's three different. Yeah, two different projects.
Just to follow up again, I mean, like other, other divisions, how realistic the timeline that you can get all this. Bought and taken care of in twen- in twenty six.
Oh, it's totally realistic. We should be able to get the stuff ordered uh, by the end of January, hopefully.
Yeah, I can speak to that just a little. You know, it's important on our vehicles. That we get them ordered early, uh, which we do. We get them executed, purchasing done early. And then we do have uh, longer lead times, uh, which they're waiting on the garbage truck that ordered last, or earlier this year. Um, it's in, it's looking like early twenty twenty six. So the sooner we can get them ordered. That just starts the clock earlier and we'll get them on their way here.
Thank you.
So one of the things that we brought up uh, at a previous meeting, bear cans in the community. And so when you look at the bear resistant cans we have here, we're gonna order two hundred and ten. So that's three hundred and eighty one per can. If we had three thousand residents, that's three eighty one a can, it'd be one point one four million dollars.
If you look at the, actually, if you want to double that, because most residents carry two cans, we're looking at about two point four million dollars to replace. Bear cans for every just residential unit. That's a, a substantial cost that I don't think we want to bear. So, um, with that being said, we, we also don't want to. Hinder the people that are taking care of their garbage already. The ones that aren't correctly securing their garbage, because it is really the community's. Job to secure their own trashcans, make sure the bears aren't getting into it. Um, we are actively working with. Our dumpster supplier to create a new dumpster lid, uh, that'll be a direct replacement. Uh, for the plastic lids, um, till we get that. I don't know what the cost will be for, so.
Generally, then, heavy.
Nicely played, by the way. I'm just curious how the lids work on this one.
Um, they've got a little lab system underneath them. Um, they're, they're very simple. Simply used, it's just a, a clip on the front, you lift the lid up. Let go of the clip, drop the lid down and it automatically latches. Uh, anybody that's secured those cans this year has not had a problem with a bear coming back. Uh, we've used them on England Street since we got them and we have not had a miss at England Street, which used to be a huge problem. Um, so. Happy to say I'm, I'm, I'm happy with what we've seen so far. We'll see how they work through the winter. Be the next, next half.
So just a follow up. So on the dumpster lids, are you looking to get something similar that's easy to lift, but just as well?
Yes, easily list that, that's um, that latches. Um, that's customer friendly is, is, is the bigger problem. I mean, there's lots of options out there that aren't customer friendly. And so we, uh, we want to make it the, the best option and easiest option for, for all of our customers.
Abby.
My favorite question of the night, have you looked at this um, bear safe grants and things like that? Um, that other communities in southeast Alaska specifically got because of this issue?
Most of those grants are geared towards native corporations, they're not geared towards. General.
I can, I can add to that if I may.
He, he is, I just want to follow up on his comments. You are correct. Um, but we have native organizations here that are willing to. That they could possibly help.
I have, I have reached out to a couple of them. They have not came, came back with anything more. We've talked about it at um, our community meeting that we do every year. Nothing more has came from that. Uh, KIC being one of the major organizations involved in those bear meetings. Um, has had turnover in that position as well. So. We'll have to find out who's in there now and, and see if we can uh, get them to support solid waste functions. Because they also used to support a e-waste event. Every year as well.
So we gotta keep.
Yes.
Keep going, even if answers no.
I can update because we did talk to defenders of wildlife. Councilmember Bradbury, just a quick follow up. Um, through our contract and grants administrator, we did reach out. I believe it was defenders of wildlife was, was one potential partner. And I think there is ongoing discussion there that they can potentially. Pay for some of these cans and also they were looking at, because. The bear resistant carts then have a monthly fee to the homeowner to rent them. Um, they were looking at subsidizing that monthly rent for uh, low income families that needed it. More to come on that.
Thank you.
So Seth or Brian, I would imagine at some point, you're doing a rig study right now that there would probably be a per can rate. For a rental of that can, whether it be a bear can or regular can to the customer because it's an extreme expense to. And I don't know what the life expectancy of a can is, but uh, at some point, you're gonna recoup that cost so you can continue to provide cans.
So life expectancy on a bear can is five to, five to seven years. Um, kind of runs right along with the warranty of it. Uh, if we get more than that, uh, we're doing good. So. Uh, our initial cans. So our initial cans that we bought, ultra carts, we've gotten twenty plus years out of a lot of those, which is, which is awesome. Unfortunately, that company no longer is in business. We've gone through a couple of different companies in the past couple of years, kind of settled on the Toter carts that we have now. And they seem to be holding up way better in our environment as well, not breaking as often. So haven't had to replace as many as those this year. We're usually replacing about a hundred and fifty cans to two hundred cans a year, just, just from them breaking.
Thank you. Anything else on solid waste? We get, we continue on with, we get the other, get recycling and collecting, correct?
Yep, so I didn't do slides on those, they kind of lumped them in here, but happy to take any questions. If there's any particular operational questions on those main divisions.
And recycling and subsidized for the collection rates, are you correct? They don't have their own fee, so. We changed stuff in rate structure on that, that I, I know of in collecting. Those guys do a great job, but those trucks are on the, on the road almost every day of the week, packing extremely heavy loads and stuff. And I just can't believe that a packer costs three hundred and fifty thousand dollars now. Brian, have you put any training in for the employees in regards to either the baler or the, or the refuge truck? I know we used to send people out to pile or whatever it was to train on the.
No training in the, in the baler operations. I, I trained most of that due to the simple fact that I've been around the baler for twenty plus years. Most of the questions that I asked are already answered. So the only training we've done the last year and a half has been more or. Land, rural landfill operation training. So I have five guys that have gone through that. So anybody at the landfill that is dealing with the trash coming in or out has gone through that training. It's more geared towards our type of facility versus the large roll apart, like you would expect the mold of truck. That's a bigger landfill.
Okay.
So.
Anybody else? You're in CNN, we can move on to wastewater.
Right, wastewater. So funding for this division comes from the Wastewater Services Fund, Business Enterprise Fund, so it is supported entirely through its rate structure. We do have a rate increase of eight percent incorporated into the budget next year. And again, this is for capital and personnel expenditures. The fund balance for the Wastewater Services Fund is non-compliant currently. Or I should say with the budget that was presented, it's a one point five million dollar deficit. So that's the amount that's needed from reserves to support operations and capital. With the action that the council took on the second to use hospital sales tax fund to support the general obligation debt for the division. That decreases that deficit to one point four million, but that still does not make the Wastewater Services Fund compliant with our fund policy. Total budget increase for the entire division is three point twelve percent, so very low due to a decrease in capital. Total operational expenditures have increased thirteen percent for a number of different accounts. So again, personnel has had a big leap at twenty percent. Almost seventeen percent for general supplies, I believe this is largely attributable to lab supplies for testing. Thirty two percent for permanent licenses and fees, again for bake and merchant fees for credit card transactions. Sixty eight percent increase in contractual services and technical services. Twenty seven percent increase for professional services, and I believe this is for permitting compliance as we work through the NPDES permit. Compliance timeline and thirty five percent increase in other charges. And this is PILT payment in lieu of taxes, which was increased for all of our enterprise funds in line with council direction. Following the port allocation study and how that was applied. There are no FTE changes for two thousand and twenty six. And again, the capital improvement program has decreased by one point eight percent. And a whole lot of projects are slated for wastewater in their capital improvement program for two thousand and twenty six. So again, just working through the list, we have replacement wastewater screening start at two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. SCADA and control system upgrade installation at fifty thousand dollars. We have water streets, sewer replacement and rehabilitation. This is the largest project, the thing that is making up the bulk of the capital improvement program at four point three million dollars. We have the continuation of wastewater generators replacement at forty thousand dollars. Sewer main and manhole repair at fifty thousand dollars. Large pump station upgrades at seventy five thousand dollars, small pump station upgrades at fifty thousand dollars. Wastewater treatment and equipment replacement at sixty thousand dollars. And then wastewater hillside rose, road utilities design at sixty thousand dollars. Upgrading sewer laterals program at thirty thousand dollars. Wastewater Park Avenue and Paris Street revitalization design at fifteen thousand dollars. Outmoted sewer pipe replacement design at three hundred thousand dollars. Ketchikan Lakes Road concrete segment replacement design, again corresponding with the work that was over on the street side, eighty thousand dollars. Disinfection requirement design, this includes two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of carryover slated for a million dollars. And again, this is corresponding with our NPDES permit. This is the regulatory required project, so not something that can be deferred. We have the continuation of the wastewater water meters, business and commercial installation. This also is carryover at eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And we have lastly wastewater Second Avenue reconstruction and landslide construction, area construction. And that's carryover and that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So total CIP is almost seven point five million dollars, but this is a decrease from what there was this last year. And a lot to take in, I'm sure there are questions, so.
Yeah. So just a couple of things that were, rose my attention. We looked at the wastewater vehicle replaced at two hundred and fifteen thousand. I just curiously went online and looked and so from a dealership, a two thousand and twenty six Ford forklift for F six hundred, which is the larger one. With the stellar upgraded package on it, it's a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. I just don't know how we came up with two fifty. I know there's going to be a delivery charge, you're going to have to have some boxes and beds for it and stuff like that. And I know these are just estimates, but I just wondered how we go about getting those.
Thank you, Mayor Severson. With that, I'd like to bring up both our garage supervisor and specific to the truck, also Jake Rogers, wastewater supervisor, I'd speak to that.
How you doing? Specifically to the vehicle specs and cost. So this truck, we're going a little bit of a different route. Right now, the current truck is just utilized as just the screening truck. That's all it can do. So the goal is to go with a similar stellar hook truck, which we could drop a catchment system down, what they're using. Leave that there, put a flat bed or whatever different style body on the truck and still be able to utilize it for the week. Currently, its only job is to bring screenings from, I think, once a week, every Thursday.
Once a week, every Thursday, yeah.
Up to landfill, then back down, that's parked till the following week. The cost is about the same, possibly even cheaper than getting a complete replacement with what we currently have.
So my question is, is we already have, and, and I don't know if it's the right size or anything like that. But we have a service right now where we're providing hook lift services to customer trucks, city catch camp, through the solid waste division. So this is a, this is a pickup of a, a hook lift box. And I don't know if there's an opportunity to utilize their services to make that collection or not.
It's, it'll be a little bit different kind of hydraulic system on it. Yes, so we'll have, we'll have extra components installed on it to create, to be able to pick the type of body, since it is beveled at the sides. You can't just dump with a normal dump truck. Because the, the angle of it is basically flat for the current body they're using. So this other system will have other hydraulic system onto it to be able to expand and lift it farther than a normal hook lifts with also staple added.
So we're going to put a lot of extra stuff on this, couldn't we just have a hook, a stainless steel hook lift box design that's standardized to the truck? I mean, it's a dump truck, right? I don't know.
Kind of what it holds the liquid and solids, so that's the main component is the liquid side of it. So can't but a normal stellar like, like the solid waste users with the doors and such, because that will leak out. So driving across town, give a nice little trail.
That wouldn't be good.
That's the first catch of everything for the sewer pipes is that's the first catch, so that's all the, the dirty dirt.
Yeah. And a five fifty would be big enough chassis for that?
I, we're still going through engineering with the company to build the box. So it's ranging from a F four fifty to five fifty. I believe a five fifty is most likely what we'll go with, but depend on what suspension can hold.
Thank you. So another question I have is for wastewater is this general supply and operating. So it's a account five ten oh two. And this is, I think, what you're talking about in regards to lab equipment. So it started out in two twenty five with an eighteen thousand dollar budget and was raised up to sixty three thousand. And I don't know if that was for a particular piece of equipment or something that we brought into the system. And then now it, it continued to grow after that. So I know that we have some extra testing parameters coming at us. I just don't know how we got that to two hundred and thirty three percent.
So, so Mayor, essentially what happened is we got a permit in April, May of two thousand and twenty four, five. And part of that, we kicked off the, our goal, after we reviewed it, we determined that, along with Jacob's employee from Anchorage, they determined that we had a strong possibility of being able to do disinfection. But part of the ability to do that is we have to be able to prove to ourselves and the state and the EPA that our plan's going to work. So in order, basically in order to do that, we had to do a bench study along with a full scale study as well. With doing that, it increased, increased materials to do that by like two hundred percent. Well over that, and there was some other equipment that needed to be purchased for the, for the permit, but. We're running a bench test every other week, we're going, going through some thirty, forty samples. So every time we do one of these tests, it's several hundred, several, several thousand dollars essentially. And we're looking for both fecal coliforms and enterococcus, which is another permit, another requirement in the new permit that we have set forth. Sorry, stumbled over my words here, but essentially that's why the cost went up is because we, we're doing this to be able, be able to prove that we can do it. And once we prove that we can do it, we can sell it to the state, because ultimately they're the ones that are going to be signing off on whatever design we present you. We could spend all this money in this and the state can go, we don't buy it. So we have to prove beyond a shadow of a doubt that we can do this. So sixty thousand to save millions, in my opinion.
Sure, sure. I get that, but these are all regulate, regulatory driven. And, and I'm not sure that in the regulation, the science exists that shows we're going to change or mixing zone, one I hope, that's my problem. But that's another story, thank you. And then I think everything else here, of course, you know, this wastewater business is going to start getting more and more expensive. And you still got contractual services, we went up from nine thousand and two thousand and twenty five to sixty five thousand dollars this year. That's a tremendous leap and I don't know where the, is that more of the permitting stuff that we have to have a contractor on board to help us with?
And thank you, Mayor Severson. We can bring something back that helps to explain all the additional types of testing that we have to do. But essentially, we added additional types of testing, samples that we have to ship off to labs off island. So we can give a breakdown of, of those and bring back to you, but that's what's driving the cost increase.
That, that would be good, yeah. It's just really concerning that we go through this process. Do we have any question? Yeah, there we go, Abby?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but what it, it sounds like is we are, one, we have new regulations, so we're, that adds cost, because we got to make sure we're all fine and dandy. But then we're also looking at ways to avoid the dreaded worst case scenario that we all been, been talking about here with the disinfections. So you kind of tacked on a, another test to what we already have to do to try to prove that we are fine, leave us alone type, type situation? Is that what I'm gathering from these small increases?
So first off is the near term, which is we're being required to disinfect our wastewater. So when Jake referenced the full scale testing, what we're doing is we're adding five percent chlorine, seven and a half percent chlorine, ten percent chlorine and twelve percent chlorine in these tests to see how it reacts with our wastewater. And then we're sampling for fecal coliforms and entero afterwards to see what effect, how effective that chlorine is at killing the bugs in the wastewater. We have to make sure we're comfortable and also prove to DEC that if we settle on that seven and a half percent is going to be adequate, that that's actually not going to cause violations in the future. So there's the disinfection component. Also, we'll be doing a study or long range to see about going to secondary treatment. Because more than likely with increased environmental regulations, it's more of a fifteen or twenty year plan. But we want to make sure we're not caught flat footed. We've done the study work, so we're ready if and when it comes.
Thank you.
Jake.
Through the mayor, I mean, our professional services, management and consulting services went up by seventy five thousand. What is this relating to? It went up from a hundred thousand last year in the budget to a hundred and seventy five thousand this year. That's five oh five dash three thousand or six forty point oh four.
Your Honor, that is the anticipation of completing the water meter business commercial installation and a rate study for the wastewater division. You'll see the same amount in water with the, with the anticipation of the conclusion of that project.
Father Lieutenant? Yes. So this is additional for the, to the eight hundred and thirteen thousand that we've slated for the water meters?
Eight hundred and thirteen, Councilmember Otani, eight hundred and thirteen thousand is the installation of the meters. So this is a study to address, once we metered, we're going to be looking at how much people are consuming. So how to structure the rates so that we're not saying to animals, you have to pay a million dollars and the cannery only has to pay five. animals, you have to pay a million dollars and the cannery only has to pay five hundred thousand. So we have to do a rate study to make sure that when we, when we see those numbers come in, we know this is, this is how we need to structure those rates to make sure that the people using the system are paying what they should be paying.
Uh, so you have to have this study to do all the rates, but what about the program that our last manager introduced for the rate studies and the uh, rate structures? We can't use that?
My top and, yeah, thanks. Uh, so, so the program that the city um, did use and does still use Waterworth. So that's a great tool for plugging in known costs to give a generalized rate increase such as five percent, eight percent in order to meet expenditures, both operating and capital over a period of time. What that program cannot do, what we contracted with Raphatellis, which is what we brought to the council several months ago to do is to perform a rate design. So it's not simply increasing the rates to meet expenditures, it's figuring out who the biggest users are and tar- and and creating a rate structure around that because right now most of our rate structures are very flat. Um, and our water and wastewater are very, very antiquated. Um, they're based on line size and type of business. Um, there's a better way to do this so that you're focusing not just on consumption, but who the biggest users are um, by rate class. And we as staff, as Michelle explained when we came to the council and, and requested consideration of that Raphatellis contract, we as staff do not have the capability to create a rate structure of that complex, complexity and to also look at different options and run different numbers. That's why we wanted to have Raphatellis. As some members of the council might recall, we actually went through a rate study for water and wastewater back in two thousand fourteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yeah, which was never adopted. So this was well in advance of the meter um, installation program was anticipation of that, but it was never adopted. But that type of study, that type of work really requires third party expertise. So that's what we are um, going to be working with Raphatellis on, um, and what we are working with them on. But we cannot have an effective water and wastewater rate until our commercial um, customers are metered. And so we will be getting that project completed by the end of twenty twenty-six. And corresponding with that, be engaging with council concurrence, Raphatellis to create that comprehensive rate design.
So just for general information, in, in the June's minutes. They're looking at their rate structure. They have water meters uh, residentially also, but they also incorporate a flat rate. Um, they're twice our population, so they have a broader spectrum, I think, running across. But um, July first twenty twenty-six. The water bill there is gonna be forty-four dollars and ninety cents. Um, the sewer bill is gonna be a hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-five cents for a whole total bill for those two of hundred and sixty-one dollars. By two thousand and twenty-nine, the water bill is gonna be fifty-two bucks and your sewer bill is gonna be a hundred and thirty-five dollars. Wastewater is driven by regulations and the need to meet those regulations and of course all the infrastructure issues we have. So this is uh, just what's happening with somebody that already has a, a water and wastewater study in place and I think over time, when you first start this thing, it's gonna take a year or two before you adjust it out to where everything settles in because some people will decrease their usage, some people will increase their usage and by category. You got all the other things that come in for, you know, fish plants and industrial. So it's, it's gonna be complicated and and I, I understand that we have to have somebody work with this, so. So one of the things on that same thing, and it's just in your narrative and it was just left in, it probably should be taken out. But the line says additional funds have been programmed for two thousand and twenty-three to account for contractor operations and missed staff vacancies. I don't think that's on page uh, four oh six.
I apologize, that's a typo.
Yeah, I know. It ju- it just never came out at all. And I, I, I understand that. So do we have any idea how much we've carried over in the capital? Project?
So.
Or wastewater?
I think it's just three ten. Nope, sorry. Um, it's, again with that water meters project, it's like one point one million. Carry over.
I went back through the projects and there, we deferred, we have deferred a lot.
Yep.
Yes.
So one of them in particular is deferred like four years.
Yep.
In a row. So there, each project has identification, which ones have been deferred.
But just carryover funding from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, I think is that.
And I think we need to look at those deferments and figure out because we can't defer them forever. Something's gonna fail, something's gonna break. And we gotta figure out how to address some of that stuff because it all it does compounds the next year if we continue to carry those things over. And so that's why I'm thinking that we need a, a, a capital plan that's immediate, midterm and long term. To see if we can find out some kind of resolution to this, so we're not continuing to carry over these projects. And, and every time we carry them over, the price goes up? Thank you guys for what you do. Does anybody else have anything for wastewater? All right. Thank you guys. So hearing, seeing them, we're gonna move on to Harvard.
Your honor?
Yeah.
Before we go to Harvard, I wonder if we could revisit a couple items or would you rather?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Um, one of the items I'd like to revisit, sorry. Um, one of the items I'd like to revisit is tourism management. Uh, page two ninety-eight. Account number six forty four, management and consulting services. I'd like to eliminate it, I'd like to eliminate this amount from uh, the budget, a hundred thousand dollars. So I'd like to make a motion to eliminate a hundred thousand dollars from that tourism management budget.
Okay.
Part of the reason, um, this was, at least as far as I know, um, happened last year. We had someone come down from Disney, look at a study for guest traffic flow. And I'm not a hundred percent sure what the expenditures for management consulting services are. But I just don't think at this time we need this. I have requested an item um, for the agenda in January to create a tourism advisory board. I think we'd be wise to do that. I think at this time, I'd like to see if we move that hundred thousand dollars from the budget.
Abby?
I'm definitely in support of this. The, the two items that are called out onto this, um, I don't necessarily port allocation study, I think we um, completed that and the guest traffic flow study. We've had some done and just not seen any production from that. And so um, I would like to look back at those studies that other people have spent a lot of money on and see how it portrays to this. I also think we're under, it's hard to bring in a study right now with all the changes within the tourism industry um, to see if it's negative or positive impacts with everything.
Yeah, just uh, we're talking about item six forty point oh four.
Yes.
Okay. What you're gonna have to say, what DOT is gonna do to us for traffic? Well, I'm not too sure that we didn't do one of these studies fifteen, ten, fifteen years ago, and it's probably still pretty valid if we just look at them, but all of them get set on a shelf, they're, they were looked at. Anybody else? Yes.
Just maybe a question for staff, I guess whoever is here to speak to that. Uh, could you tell it, uh, I'm just, I'm a little on the fence with this one because this is, well, to back up a little. I'm less likely to jump on board with cutting in this department just because it comes from the tourist dollars and I really like to focus on the stuff that comes from the general fund, but I'm still in favor of scrutinizing everything. Um, but given that our tourist numbers just keep increasing, increasing, increasing and congestion is getting worse, worse, worse. I'd hate to pull the rug out on some, if there's something legitimate that is gonna be studied and implemented. So Lacy, is there any plans for something to actually happen with this or is this more of a, maybe we'll do it later or?
So, so those were, yes, my understanding was despite the description, um, tourism manager had two studies in mind for twenty twenty-six. So one was um, sort of a traffic and more specifically a passenger with this setting through downtown. Um, because it is congested, spaces limited. Yes, we did have, Disney have a look at that. Um, but it was, uh, what they came back with was, was fairly high level. It wasn't really a plan. It was just sort of noticing places where there were um, pinch points and things like that. So it wasn't, it wasn't really a plan. Um, so that was something that the tourism manager wanted to focus on in twenty twenty-six. The other was that was not mentioned. Um, was an economic impact study. So understanding just what the value of, of the cruise economy is um, in the community and doing this study, understanding what that impact is before there are further adjustments that the community might want to make in terms of um, I'm gonna say limitations or other restrictions on the total number of people that come to town. Obviously, Ketchikan has not really had that type of community conversation yet, but we've seen it in a lot of other communities in southeast Alaska. There's been citizen ref- referendum um, petitions, which is wonderful. Um, but I think it would be helpful for everybody to understand what that impact is of those cruise dollars and if it were to increase or decrease what that does to our operations and also to, to um, to businesses as well. So that was the other study that the tourism manager wanted to do. Um, we can absolutely bring back what Councilmember Zengi had requested as a budget update. We can make sure the tourism manager is here to speak more to it. Um, obviously if a tourism advisory board is created next year, they may have other ideas for other studies or other, other focuses for the division. Um, so understandably that, you know, there's a myriad of different studies that we could do. Um, but I think it's up to the council as to what would be the most, most prudent. Um, at this point, I think both of those studies are good. Um, we've not really had a, a passenger flow study when we were initially looking at the expansion of berth one and two. There were some different plans and different studies on the port itself, but I think what the tourism manager is wanting to look at is beyond and sort of the downtown area as a whole.
Just a quick follow-up if I could?
Yes.
I just, and I wonder too, uh, maybe I'm not understanding this right, but is there potential where some of these studies might down the road provide information that could help to justify using, this topic I'm always bringing up, but more of those tourism dollars towards uh, services and things. I mean, could that be a piece of these studies or am I, am I off base?
Potentially. I mean, I think if there's improvements that would need to be made due to, um, you know, passenger flow um, and increasing uh, just transportation throughout the community as a result of the impact of tourism. I think that would make a good case for using those dollars to create those enhancements. Um, I don't see that in the same way as the, for the economic impact study. Um, but I do see probably a role for CVB or um, port revenues to be used for whatever might come out of that uh, passenger flow and transportation study.
Yes, Jake?
I'll support this uh, item because the borough did a strategic plan study and a lot of those things are taken into account and that was shelved. We did a study that was shelved. Yeah, I understand these are funds from the CVB funds, but we've got to be good stewards and spend them the right way. And I think in many cases, a lot of duplication has been done and is being done. And every time a study is done, it's shelved.
Anybody else? Guaranteeing then with fecal room?
Motani?
Yes.
Who's?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
No.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Thing in it, Finnegan?
No.
Gats?
Yes.
And that passenger on her five to two.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Judy?
Um, actually I do, your honor. Um, going to mayor and council. Um, talking to community grants. I know that we cut that amount, um, I think by and I had some questions for staff on this. Uh, one was, would it be possible to make up that difference out of the hospital sales tax? As opposed to our general sales tax? And uh, I got the impression that that's more complicated. It might not be possible. So then I wanted to know what are we doing with the money that the hospital is paying us in rent? And my understanding is that's going back into the hospital sales tax fund. Um, so my question is, I mean, this is a benefit by funding these nonprofits. It's a benefit to the hospital, I feel, because it kind of lowers the numbers of folks going there. I'm wondering if it's possible to make up that difference with funds from the hospital, the rents that they're paying us. So if we took fifty thousand dollars of that and every year put it in, included that with our, as the portion that's coming out to pay for these grants. And then every year, the rent, I think it starts, Michelle, you said twenty twenty-six, it starts going up?
I think twenty-six is the first year of an increase.
Is there a way that we could put that in an account that just keeps growing so that we have a way eventually of funding these nonprofits? So I haven't really, I just don't know if that's possible, but I'm wondering if it is.
Um, Councilmember Zegi, I think it is possible. There's, we can bring something back um, for the immediate, um, which is if the council wants to restore the initial funding amount for the community agency grant program. Um, we can do that and use hospital sales tax funds. And then we can also um, bring something back for how that amount that the city receives in rent can be put aside for this use or something else. Um, and that probably won't necessarily be in place for budget adoption, but something that we could continue talking about in twenty twenty-six. Um, as well as just if there are proceeds above and beyond in the hospital sales tax fund. Um, how we wanna look at that for either other uses or we wanna reexamine that whole tax structure.
I think it would be important for us to do that. I mean, there's other uses, I think. And if there's a way that we can use it, I think we should. So, um, do I need four hands to get staff to look at that?
Forgot him.
She points at me.
All right, anything else? Yes, Jay?
I'd like to make a motion to eliminate the position of tourism manager and the tourism department. My justification for that is there are small items and that we put out to RFP and nothing gets done because nobody wants to uh, respond to the RFP. And we had five hundred thousand dollars worth of items in the budget last year, nothing was done. I think it is time that we have a tourism board and in conjunction with the KBB, we can eliminate and streamline uh, the situation.
It has been moved and seconded discussion.
And as I said, I mean, uh, there is a time and a place to have a department that is functional and a department that's non-functional. And I believe we can get a lot more done by, instead of keeping the funds that are in the tourism uh, department of like uh, signs, uh, like the uh, bathrooms. If you assign them to the KBB or the chamber, they can get things done without an RFP. Things can move forward. And at one point, we wanted a tourism seat to be our years, but it hasn't really worked out. And it's time to move on.
Judy.
Um so I know that it's been a little frustrating, but I think in part. Um I know Abby and I had worked when she was on the council pretty hard on getting a tourism position. What we got was not what we had asked for. Um through no fault of anybody who's here. What I'd like to see if I, if we could maybe make an amendment is. I think we need to have a work session on tourism and what we want to see, what we want that to do. And maybe do that at the time we are having a discussion about. The board having, you know, a tourism board or an advisory council. I don't know that eliminating it right now would be the right thing to do. I'm not saying that it, you know. That it's not a good idea. I don't know. I think the way it is right now, we need to maybe give it. Some more thought and how we're going to make that position happen. Cause even. If we do get an advisory board and I do want to see us work with the KBB. I really think there needs to be somebody there, some type of position there. I don't know what that looks like. Um maybe it's a tourism manager, maybe it's something else. Um but yeah, I don't know that eliminating it right now is a good idea.
So are you making an amendment? Is that what you were doing?
Well, I guess so.
What are you amending it?
I don't know.
You want to vote on the?
I was about to say, how do you amend an elimination? Without countering the.
Yeah, exactly.
The motion, cause I mean.
Anybody?
I just don't know.
I'll just give mine brief. Uh however many years ago it was when we brought this thing about, I was not in favor of it and uh. I just always worry about adding to government and to uh to kind of give some. Credit to what Jay's saying. I think this was a good example of it. There's been a lot of frustrations. On the flip side, I do think. We haven't exactly been. Easy to work with. If we take a look in the mirror, we've had a lot of disagreements, a lot of. Saying go get a bathroom. No, we don't like, and I'm including myself. No, we don't like it. No, we don't like the price. No, we don't like the location. And every time we do that, it's a very long process and we have to wait another meeting. So. I'm just looking at both sides, but I do agree it's very frustrating to see these things not get done. Um but. Given that we did go in on this and we did create it and that there's an employee and all that, I don't. It feels a little too abrupt to just. Shellac it right now with. What feels like on a whim. So I don't think I can support it, but I am in favor of looking at uh. Kind of maybe taking another hard look at the situation for sure. Janely.
When we brought this about, the idea was that. Um the city would have a voice regarding the tourism's uh. Program, which we tend to not have. Um I, I do take a little bit of. I'm a little taken back because I think there's a conflict of interest at this table in the um. Item because they sit on the board. For the KBB, my understanding.
I don't.
I don't know if that's a conflict of interest or not, but I'm going to bring it up. Oh, you don't know more? Oh, you're the one. Okay. Just checking. The. I don't know. I, I think that this is a very early on pro uh, I don't feel that we should be cancelling it. Um it's very young. I think it has potential to um. I think it has more potential, but I think we haven't given it time and and in uh some of the things that we're talking about. Uh council voted them down. It wasn't the, the manager of the program. Um. Or, and I don't feel that it's fair to any department if nobody answers a um. RFP, that should not be uh held accountable for the first, the departments. I'm sure there's a lot of departments we've had in the past that we've put out RFPs and no one answered. For various, I'm pretty sure various reasons. Um but that's all I have to say about it.
Judy, and then Nick.
I guess I'd like to make an amendment to. Revamp the position, not eliminate it, but maybe revamp, restructure. Probably a better word.
I, I think probably would be uh appropriate. It will be for. Uh to a workshop to talk about your role program.
Yes.
Is that, is that what you're thinking?
That's what I'm thinking.
Abby.
Um obviously I was, Judy and I kind of head up. Convincing us to give, to give us a chance on this position. Um. It's definitely not what the intention of it was. Um I'll just give a few examples. We specifically had asked for a rate structure. This person was going to come up with a. Rate structure for us. Um that was the number one task they were given. Uh that was, ended up having to be done here at the table. By two council members instead of uh elsewhere after we've asked for multiple years. Um the museum director out of her. Her speech about her budget, she asked for tourism help. Said she didn't really know who to go to. Um those are concerning factors because that's where the tourism manager's position should be focused on. That's where the city can have a voice and that's where city can make uh makens meet for that area, help fund other areas. And whatnot. Um. So I, I uh, I see others' comments about maybe not just eliminating. This, but this isn't the first time this position's been talked about at this table saying it's not working. We're here again talking about it's not working. Um projects aren't getting done. Um. And I do have to say, I, I think I am in favor of. Removing this position of if it goes to a vote or not. I think it's amended potentially now. Uh but I, I definitely think I've thought long and hard about this. Um I tried to come in with an open mind because in January I actually. December, I stood in front of you guys, expressed my same opinion I have now, but I tried, I had hope because there were some, I thought some really good. Ideas potentially coming out of there and I just, I'm not seeing that. Um I'm sad to even say that. I want that position gone because I was so hopeful that it could do what we needed it to do for our citizens and help. With our budget issues and, and things like that. So that right now, I'm willing that favor and cancel it.
Yeah, um I guess I'm having some real challenges seeing. What maybe the previous council defined this would be and what we're getting. And I don't, maybe it's not well defined. But it's at this point in time, I don't believe we're, we're. Getting the, the job done, what we thought we wanted or what, whatever. But the other thing. Is for me, for a one position staff, the overhead in here is way too high. She's being char, we're being charged twenty thousand dollars for an office. In this thing right here. There are things like membership and dues, fourteen thousand dollars for one person. And there's just, there are just several of them like that that go along with. It's too many, there's some expenses in there I can't, I can't agree with. So if we need to look at it. And redefine it, but if we redefine it, we better hold ourselves accountable because we're the ones that did it.
So presently we have a motion on the floor to dismiss that was seconded. Judy uh requested a motion to defer without a second. Is that correct?
I will second that motion.
So it has been moved and seconded. So no, it's on the motion to defer.
Didn't she amend it? She didn't ask for deferment.
No, she motioned to amend to restructure the position.
Which is much different than deferment.
Restructured position.
Instead of.
Are we under the impression to defer?
No, to, to amend it. And if I may.
Yep.
I, I can speak to that. Um I, I just, I think it's the, the best suggestion that's been made so far. I think there's a, there's a good deal of. Of misunderstanding about what the position is supposed to be. From, from our perspective, I don't think there's really great communication necessarily, I was between that department and ourselves. I think there have been um some really muddied messages, uh even from the council about what the expectations are for that department. I'm reluctant at this hour to just slice that department clean off the budget. Uh I think the much more salient path would be to establish a tourism advisory board and with or without that board. To have a work session and talk about what we actually clarify what we want, uh the expectations, what the actual goals might be for that department. If we don't feel that it is meeting the objectives that we've set for council, we need to reexamine the, the. The, the role itself or the, the objectives that are set by this council. But it was a hard get. I mean, there was a, a lot of effort went into establishing this position. And if we're not satisfied with the way that it's working right now, I don't think we should just say, ah, forget it, throw our hands up, throw it out the window. I think we should do the hard work of taking the long look of seeing what we can do to make it function better for the city and its residents. We are. Lot, love it or hate it, we are a, a, a community that depends very much on tourism dollars. And I would love to see this position be of great satisfaction to the members of the community, business owners. Members of the city staff and members of the council as well. Seems that we're not there. Uh I don't think that means we should just throw the whole thing out the window. I think we should reexamine it and find a way to make it work.
So just for clarification, so what we would do is we request to make the city manager and the tourism staff because they're your employee?
Yes.
Yeah. So just to make sure that we're not going to be just talking to the tourism director and tourism department. We're going to go through the city manager's office and we're going to do that.
Yeah, I think um with the a- adding an advisory board, because if we know our history. Um we didn't have an advisory board for a museum. When we added that, I think it really will help set a tone. And build and create a better system because I think. As long as you're putting, you know, more community members on there that can assist and put in, you know, comments and. And also counsel. But I think that the amendment works better for that.
Right. Could someone please restate the amendment we're about to vote on?
So you want me to?
Yes, because I really am very unsure as to what this amendment is.
Well, we have the first amendment to totally eliminate the position.
Well, that's the motion, but what's the amendment from Judy?
Uh the mo, the amendment from Judy I put down was to restructure the position and I think. And if you don't mind, by holding a workstation and establishing an advisory board, I think that all goes hand in hand and.
So a yes vote is saying we want to have a work session and we are confirming an advisory board.
Correct.
So there'll be two votes.
Well, the deferment passes the primary vote.
Amendment.
Yeah, if the amendment passes, then we're.
Are you kind of eliminating Jay, but I think we should vote on Jay's.
That's what I'm saying. Like I feel like this is.
This is so much different than.
Yeah, so we're just, we're wiping the initial motion, which isn't allowed to completely wipe.
So maybe we should vote on Jay's and then Judy will have as another motion rather than an amendment.
Unless Jay's passes.
Unless Jay passes, but then you're totally eliminated.
So if somebody makes a motion, regardless of what the situation is, somebody can amend it.
Yes, you can. And she's going to amend that. And so. If, or we could go that.
The amendment at this particular point passes. Presidiously wise, right? Then it takes this motion and puts it in deferment until after that discussion.
It would to me kind of.
Because, because part of that discussion is whether or not we're going to keep the position or not.
Well, that would be in my restructuring.
Lacy, you have anything to add?
I have a lot to add, Your Honor. Um. I understand the council's concerns and frustrations. But I will remind you that that is one of my staff members. You do not have the authority to do what you're doing right now, which is to fire them. Based on performance. Okay? If you had a problem with her performance, that's something that you should have been directing at management. That's our failure, not hers. I wholeheartedly agree that there should be a work session. If there is a misunderstanding. About what that person should be doing, what that position should be doing, then we need to talk about it. If they're not meeting the expectation, we need to talk about that. Right now what we're talking about is eliminating a position based on perceived performance. I have a really big problem with that. I will tell you that if that position is eliminated and it sounds like there's still a need for it. I don't know what your expectation is for how that work is going to be done. There's been mention about third parties. KBB, Chamber. I think it's a pretty big uh leap to think that they're going to pick up some of the things that we're discussing. I think an advisory board is a wonderful idea. Having been the museum director when that was reconstituted to see what a group of engaged citizens can do for a department is a really cool thing in this community. I think that's great. I think that's a really good place to start. I will remind the council that when this position came about. Because there were a lot of similar positions within Southeast, those positions came out of a citizen group. We're a little late to the table. We have a position that's now needing a citizens group. Not saying that's wrong, but I think before you eliminate a position, you should see how that dynamic works between a citizen group and that department. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And it wasn't, um I think the motion that was made was to eliminate. The tourism division, which is a person basically by. And so in that, that is uh. Power, I think, of the, of the um council. We shouldn't be talking or working on the performance part of that unless we're working with you through the division. So right now we have a amendment that was seconded to. Move us into a work session to restructure and talk about the overall part of that program and the potential of. Enhancing through uh an advisory board, et cetera. So that's the motion that's on the table now.
I'm just going to ask if council member Matani would be willing to withdraw his initial motion at this time. Since, and then make Judy's the main motion and go into the work session and restructure.
As the mayor explained, I mean, we can defer the motion after the work session. I don't think I should be.
Okay.
Eliminating the motion.
No, and all that does is carries into the work session.
Okay.
So would you please call the roll on the amendment?
Matani?
No.
Who's?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bradbury?
On the amend, like the restructuring.
Restructuring, yeah.
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
And Gatz?
Yes.
So that passes six to one.
So um I'll leave it to the manager. We'll do this after the first of the year, I would imagine, and end up with something.
Would the council like to have this work session as part of what councilmembers Zengi had initially requested? Which is the board's advisory board discussion?
That probably works great. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
So what happens with Jay's motion?
It, it's automatically deferred.
Well, it was amended to read this, but.
So, so then now, so it's the, the council voted to go to a work session, which just could be part of the work session.
Or you could, this amended motion could serve as the main motion.
Yeah, it, right now the amended motion is the main motion.
Why can't I just defer the main motion? Because you can't amend a motion to be something completely different than the main motion.
It's not even germane.
Why as me as a second or can I not ask to defer that motion? Until a restructuring meeting can happen.
You could do that too.
Because I mean, his motion is still, we can't just.
It's still an active motion.
It was first and seconded, so we can't just eliminate. So.
Make the motion and defer.
Can I defer? The motion to.
Eliminate.
Eliminate the one FTE position for the tourism management division. Until after a restructuring meeting, a work session is.
Second.
I think there's one correction. I believe the motion was to remove the whole department, not any position.
Right. Defer to remove the whole the tourism department.
My second step.
Until after restructuring.
Any discussion? Do you call the roll?
Who's?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Gatz?
Yes.
Matani?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other items in regard to tourism? Let's move to Harvard.
Sorry. All right.
Good evening, Your Honor. Councilmembers Wayne, Phil, Sport, Robbie, Troy.
So what do you got, Lacy?
Do you mind if I go through real quick, just at high level?
Yep, the birth thing.
We'll, we'll put you under the microscope. So um funding for the Harbor Department comes from Harbor Services Fund, which is revenue generating, and also the Harbor Construction Fund for capital improvement program. We do have a proposed rate increase of eight percent. Um, the fund balance for the Harbor Services Fund is noncompliant. Um, again, the uh division is needing a four hundred and eight thousand dollar expenditure um from appropriated reserves. So deficit expenditure to meet twenty twenty-six capital and. Uh, operations with the action that the city council took on the second for use of hospital sales tax for the general obligation bond debt within the division. That actually lowers this deficit to fifty-five thousand dollars, but even with that, um, the fund balance reserve is still not fully compliant. Total budget increase for the division is eight percent for twenty twenty-six. Um, the total operational increase for um the division, so inclusive of personnel but not capital, is about four point four percent. So that is compliant with our five percent threshold. Um, what has uh led to the increase, modest though it may be, is again personnel services benefits, but also an increase in utilities um following different rate increases. There are no F T E changes for Harbors in twenty twenty-six, and we have capital requests with an increase of about fifteen percent for twenty twenty-six. And next slide, so quite a few projects are slated for twenty twenty-six um and. Quite a few of them include carryover funds. So just working down the list, we have the Harbor Master Building Office Doors Harbor Share. This is fifteen thousand dollars. So this is a shared project between Harbors and Fort because they both utilize the same facility. We have a new maintenance shop. This is Harbor Share. This is carryover at seven hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. We have Far Harbor North Maintenance Dredging, um, including sixty thousand dollars of carryover for a ninety thousand dollar project in twenty twenty-six.
We love TVs.
Oh.
There it is.
Sit down, Mark.
Good night.
Far Harbor North, uh, Concrete Rehab Phase Two. This also includes carryover, um, fifteen thousand dollars. Piling replacement, also carryover seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, security cameras, uh, this is for Harbor Share. Um, at fifteen thousand dollars. Thodic protection, also carryover at fifty thousand dollars. Uh, dredging, diverter, R F P, and permitting, that is thirty thousand dollars. Our Harbor South flotation, that's also carryover at thirteen thousand dollars. Put twelve electrical pedestals replacement, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And electrical upgrade at Casey Marine Harbor, Harbors Share, carryover fifty thousand dollars. And Far Harbor South Ramp, vessel repair, phase two, carryover at fifty thousand dollars. So this is a one point three million dollar capital improvement program. So that's fifteen percent increase over twenty twenty-five. Um, with quite a bit of carryover from projects that were not completed in twenty twenty-five. So any questions?
So the carryovers, uh, were they started or they just not complete?
Yeah, some of these were certainly started. Um, the Harbor Master Office Doors, uh, that was started naturally this year. We've replaced. Um, the side door to the break room and uh actually this week, Friday, uh, Thursday, Friday. Uh, they'll be coming back to replace two upstairs uh doors as well. Uh, the request again for this year, uh, going into twenty-six, another fifteen thousand is to actually continue that. As you know, the uh. Uh, we're right there on the water. Our doors have kind of rotted away. Uh, the fifteen thousand will be used for the front doors. We, we initially were going to do the front doors to the, the main building coming in. Uh, we could not get those here with duty tariffs, things like that. And uh long lead times, so instead we were able to replace the other doors. So uh, yes. So the short answer is this year's, we did use the door money and we've replaced two doors. Next year will be the main front doors.
Thank you. Just as a comment, um, and it's in other divisions also, we've added the um. The introduction of the public restroom rates. I think that uh if we could add that to all the narratives in those departments, because I don't think it's spelled out in there, and it'd be just nice to have it in the narrative as we go through that. Yeah, Jay?
I'd just like to make a comment on the new maintenance shop at the harbor. That is an emergency, not only a necessity. We have free harbor personnel literally working out of, I, I call it the thirty by fifteen box. There's a lot of lubricant smell. There's a lot of diesel smell. A harbor team is a crackerjack team. They don't ask for help. They go out and fix the harbors. They go out and do stuff and it's done in, in a timely fashion. But they do deserve a building that will accommodate them to get their work done properly. And have safety and health issues addressed.
Thank you, Jay. Anybody else? Abby and then Dick.
I just had a question on the capital project, the security cameras at the harbor. Um, I'm just curious to know where we've gotten the estimate from and kind of where we're looking at, who we're looking at using for that.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the very first part.
Security cameras, harbor, capital, last one.
Right, okay. So the security cameras that are going in, uh, that's kind of an annual thing they've been doing. Uh, we've allocated, uh, you know, like, I think they've done this year after year. Uh, those prices we get done through K P U. Um, and they've been helping us out, coming in, replacing or adding new cameras throughout. Uh, as you realize, we have acres and acres of, of harbor. And, you know, it's, it's always, well, what about over here and what about here? And there's certain areas that we have. So ideally, what we're trying to do is year to year, ask for more funding. Uh, so we can add more cameras and or replace those that are existing. So uh, that price is kind of a set price. Uh, this year, we actually uh used a lot of that funding as well to add cameras to the harbors. And then you'll also see on the port side to the port as well. So we have added cameras this year and kind of also spet that down as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Yes, Dick.
Yeah, what's the status of the new maintenance shop harbor that's you're building? The new shop and so forth. I mean, is it designed? Is it ready to go to contract or where?
It is not ready to go. We have initially, they, they went out to, if you'll recall, they went out uh with the P N V. Uh, P N D came back with a design. I, I believe last year it came up in front of the council. That design was shot down. I was given direction to find a cheaper or a less, I, I should say, a less expensive way to build that building. If you recall, I brought a uh, a memo in with, with information in regards, I, I'm sorry, I need to back that up. I'm, I'm messing that up. Um, I'm thinking of two different things.
Yeah.
The actual harbor, sorry about that. The Harbor Master Building itself, uh, it uh was designed by uh. Uh, R and M. Uh, it was just a basic design. This is what the design looks like. R and M no longer does that work, so we can't finish that up. What we'll need to do, if this is, if this is blessed, I'll need to get another architectural firm to. Uh, look at what we've already got existing, tweak that so we can get that design and then move into construction after that. I don't think it would be a great big lift. Uh, to get that going. We have a basic uh outlook of, of what needs to be done. I've seen that design. It's a basic design. It will need to go to a hundred percent so we can get that out for construction.
And this is the new maintenance field?
That is the new maintenance, okay, yes, sir, yes. Okay.
So Wayne, I think that there was just a, a, a change in. Business in regards to the architect that was working at R and M, so there's still an architect in town, so. I don't know if it makes any sense to continue along with the same architect, even though they went to a different firm. Because they already have a good portion of that done, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel and pay for something that's already been done.
We would certainly look into that, see if that's something that's viable. Um, but the last word I got was, that's no longer viable. They're not there doing that, but I would certainly look into that.
Um, I have a question. It's probably either you or Seth, but in regards to uh. The demolition of um, the old Kate's Kitchen building there. There's also a trestle that goes all the way out to the pierhead. So is the plan in the future, I know we probably have to get some permits and this and that and the other thing, is, is to fill that whole section until the parking lot is continuous?
Yes, sir, I can speak to that. Uh, Your Honor, um, I, I have had conversations with Director Brackey. Uh, the idea is actually, they're gonna burn that building down, uh, have to get Phil and fill that completely in, uh, and then level that out. Uh, in regards to this uh south ramp two trestle repair, our idea is, uh, we would need to re. Uh, basically replace the planking on that once that is done, and that's what this, this is, uh, you know, this, this request is, and that would be done by. Our staff. That would be one of the uh projects for staff.
But in the long term, are we going to get rid of that trestle? Because that's a liability.
That, I, the, the last I heard, now that, that we will have to ask um, uh, Public Works. Um, I know Amanda had actually looked into that and talked to, um, because it's considered a historical, oh, you're here. It's considered a historical uh, uh, item, and I don't know where that stands right now.
Well, how is it considered an historical item? It's a street or a ramp that's owned by the city of Catscape? I don't think it's on, is it on a historical register?
Uh, Mayor Seabird's in so specific to the wooden trestle that goes out to Far Harbor Ramp Two. Uh, Army Four did express that that was considered a historic structure. Um, I think that we should attempt to uh. Work around that or convince them otherwise because it's a expensive cost to rebuild it as a trestle. And it's really, at least the first portion of it, um, it's better, I think, to fill it in. Now. Try to do our best, be successful in that and to get the permitting for it. I don't, I don't think we can probably get all of it filled in, uh, as the trestle goes out further. Uh, piling height gets greater, filling out there is. Say maybe eighty percent of the structure, though, could be filled.
Yeah, I, I think if we can reduce our liability and fill that, make that a, a very usable parking lot, maybe even you could put another restroom in that area. Very easy for patrons. Uh, it, it all makes sense to me, so I just, hopefully we can go down that path in the future. Yes, Abby?
So hear me out. I know it's late, but now I'm super confused. So on this particular budget, or this capital program, we have a, a one. A little over one million dollar carryover from last year C I Ps to this year. But yeah, we have a fifteen percent increase in funding. It's not mathin' to me. I know it's because, I mean, it's the carryover portion that. And now I'm realizing I should ask this question on day one when we had it. So I just am trying to figure out the percentages we're seeing or the. The fifteen million dollar numbers.
Adopted budget to adopted budget. So we're looking at the twenty twenty-five adopted capital improvement program. Compared to the twenty twenty-six proposed capital improvement program. So carryover has nothing to do with that. It's just numbers. So when you add in the carryover.
It then goes.
It goes way down, right? I mean, because we're not, we're not appropriating new funds. We're just looking at dollars for dollars within the two, two years.
So then to follow up on that, are we really fifteen million dollars in, in the hole after increasing rates on our general government budget or? I guess I, I don't know, like, how serious is our, our deficit, I guess? And I'm sorry I'm bringing this up right now because.
Oh, it's good.
I just realized, I started, I'm realizing, like, how bad is our actual deficit based off of what we're spending, like, actually spending?
So if they're gonna go within thirty-eight or thirty-nine million in a capital project for general government, we're carrying over sixteen. Then it's, yeah, you do the math and it's, it's half of that, right? Just about a half of it.
So then we're really not fifteen million dollar deficit then, plus rates. Is that what I'm getting? Sixteen million dollars is more than fifteen million dollars, so I'm just trying to math, like.
Yeah.
Your Honor, I, what's important to look at is the funds that those capital projects are coming from. I mean, there's a big capital project in the port fund for eight million in twenty twenty-five and six million in twenty twenty-six and. Um, so we've been raising rates for the port fund to be able to pay for these capital improvements. So when you look at the port fund in the budget overview. The port fund is projected to start twenty twenty-six with thirty-two million dollars. It's project, I, I'm just, it is an example, the port fund, because that one was an eight million dollar draw. So, and we're projecting to have eleven million in capital for twenty twenty-six and thirty million dollars remaining. So it's. You can call it a deficit, but when you're saving money to make those capital improvements. It's, it's not a deficit from the perspective that you're negative cash in, in that fund per se. It's, you're utilizing the cash that you have saved to perform capital improvements. And those are okay, but there are funds in the wastewater fund, for example. We don't have the revenue structure to pay for the capital improvements that we need to perform. We've talked about deferring projects and, and you even mentioned we can't keep deferring. We can't, but we need to raise the rates to pay for those. So there are certain funds and then there are differences in those funds. So some of them are okay and they're good and they're needed, and some of them aren't.
I am just asking about the summary page that our city manager transmitted to us. That said, we are fifteen million dollar deficit after rates increase. So what I'm gathering is not as. Like fifteen million on paper is the number, but in reality.
No, it in, it includes.
It's not.
Anything that was returned to reserves that was not spent in twenty twenty-five. So. It's re-appropriated in twenty twenty-six, but we count it as twenty twenty-five income. So if you look at page eighteen. Way back for this, sorry, Wayne. If you look at the twenty twenty-five estimate. Our expenditures are to make reserves, so it's higher than what we had originally budgeted. Our revenues plus what we had in reserves, you're at a hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. But if you look at our total expenditures, they're estimated at eighty-eight million dollars as opposed to a hundred and sixteen million dollars. So that difference goes back into the reserves. For a starting reserve balance in twenty twenty-six of ninety-three thousand dollars. So. I'm so used to thousands of this. Hundred billion. So you see that the ending estimate of twenty twenty-five equals the starting for twenty twenty-six. That's what we have to work with. When we add in what our projected revenues are and then minus our expenses. That difference between the beginning reserves and the end reserves is your deficit. That's your fifteen million.
Fifteen million, though.
But it includes capital.
And it includes capital. It includes all the capital we're discussing, yep. So had we spent all of that capital in twenty twenty-five, the draw in twenty twenty-six to do the same level of projects would be huge, but we're carrying it over. Which we do every year. Projects, not all projects get finished, so there's always a, a certain level of carryover. Go ahead, John.
And just to point one more thing, we have operating revenues, total operating revenues of seventy-five million. And we look at operating expenditures, expenditures at sixty-four million. And then you have capital, which is thirty-seven million. So it's just, it's just an important perspective to look at. What are our operating revenues? Are we covering our operating costs? Now, we still have to go back and look at each fund individually because the port is pulling in additional revenues. So we have to look at that by fund to make sure that our operating costs in the solid waste fund, the harbor fund. The general fund, wherever we have labor and, and those main operating costs, we have to make sure that those revenues are covering those operating costs. Which is the reason for an increase.
Anything else on harbors? Let's move to port.
Okay. So the port department is supported by Port Fund, which is an enterprise fund, supported entirely by its rate structure. There are no proposed rate increases until twenty twenty seven per council action earlier this year. The fund balance is compliant. Um even though the fund balance is compliant, we do have a request reserves expenditure at one point five eight million dollars needed to fund um primarily capital. Um but we have very healthy reserves in this fund, so that's why that fund balance remains compliant despite that deficit. The total budget decrease for the port department is six point two three percent. So spending has gone down. Total operations have increased by six point seven percent, so not quite meeting that five percent threshold. Um this is due to personnel services and benefits increasing, also utilities for the public restroom share for port, for the port allocation study that increased quite a bit. Um there's a small increase in interdepartmental charges. Um and then about a almost a twelve percent increase in other costs. This is the payment in lieu of taxes, the PIL increase for the port as an enterprise for that port allocation study. Uh we increased again that that PIL calculation for all of our enterprises. There are no FTE changes in twenty twenty six. Um and the capital improvement program did actually decrease by about fifteen percent. Twenty twenty six. Next slide. So even though the CIP decreased, we are still at almost a twelve million dollar CIP for the port twenty twenty six. So let me just go through the projects. Um so again, we've got that harbor master building, office doors, port share project at fifteen thousand dollars. The new maintenance shop port share, that's also carryover at seven hundred sixty six thousand dollars. Birth one, two, combined security and storage building and tourism rain shelter project at three hundred five thousand dollars. I put a little asterisk next to that and a couple of other projects. These are projects that the council will recall. We have submitted to the Ketchikan Gateway Borough for their consideration of use of the five hundred thousand dollars that they set aside in their CPV funding to collaborate with the city on um projects that the council had approved of. We also have port benches and trash can replacement um at a hundred twenty five thousand dollars. That's another borough potential CPV funded um collaboration project. We have birth one and two assessment and above corrosion evaluation refurbishment. Um this is carryover. This is the biggest project um in the department at six point seven million dollars. This is for that cathodic protection um along births one and two. Daily float refurbishment at four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Port infrastructure repair project at two hundred thousand dollars. Uh original birth to dock pile anodes replacement at a hundred forty thousand dollars. Again, more cathodic protection. Uh birth one expansion dolphin and dock two hundred ninety thousand dollars. Birth three marine facilities at one point two million dollars. I believe this is more cathodic protection.
That is correct. It's birth three cathodic protection.
Yep. Uh port electrification at three hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is just for some preliminary design work. This is obviously not to electrify. That would be much more expensive. Uh harbor view park dock upgrades and refurbishments. So this is for a little harbor reef park there um near near city float. Eight hundred eighty seven thousand dollars. Port security cameras, so similar to what we've um talked about on the harbor side for upgrading and replacing cameras along the quarter, twenty four thousand dollars. Additional birth one and two ride title replacement at three hundred twenty thousand dollars. Lastly, electrical upgrades at pacing grand harbor port share is carryover at fifty thousand dollars. So again, twelve million dollars um in port improvements for twenty twenty six, but still a fifteen and a half percent decrease over the twenty twenty five budget. Happy to take any questions.
Your honor. Yes, go ahead.
These are extensive projects. Do we have any idea that all of these projects will be taken care of in twenty twenty?
Odds are absolutely no. Uh what what we really are trying to do, if you recall, um you know, we have the assessment done by Takuichinarian. We have the follow-up uh estimate done by P and D. That's where we came up with, hey, these are the things that we need to get done. These are the most crucial. Uh basically, if these things are approved, it gets us uh into the starting blocks and gets us going. We'll get get this on the street, get the design taken care of, and then we'll move into construction as soon as we possibly can. And that's kind of where that, some of these things will be certainly done quicker than others. Um but it's uh, I I'd love to be able to say, yes, we can get this done, but I'd be lying to you like that. So the reality is uh to get approval and get this going, uh because this is gonna be a multi-year thing to get done, as you know. And everything that's on here minus um one item, and I can't remember off the top, oh, it's birth one expansion dolphin and dock. Everything on here is based off of that priority uh breakdown that was done, where this is, you know, within zero to two years, this needs to be done. So that's why we put this on the on the uh the list this year, so we can get this going. That was the idea behind that.
So one of the things in these capital projects and and I know we've got a different format here we're working through. In the old budget, we used to get probably three pages that were just department, the project, and the six-year projections. Um that was just listed by department. And try to find that type of information for for me. Uh I got one here that kind of does that, but it it's it's not very easy to read. It was on a landscape page that uh took a single item, single line for each one of the projects. And it it's so much easier to work with than what we have in this particular one at a glance.
Isn't the last section of that? So of the operating budget?
The CIP tab, doesn't that?
So the the start of the capital improvement um program, so after that blue sheet, um each of the departments have a capital improvement program. Um it does list by by percentage of cost of all of the projects. But then if you go to the next page, it does list out all of the projects. Um it shows that five-year horizon um for the program. I will agree that it's it's a little um a little difficult to read, and I think we're all getting used to it. Um it does list projects alphabetically, um so not necessarily the year um that they're being programmed. Um and there are numbers next to them, but those are also not in order. There's some nuances to to our new program that we are working through.
Yeah, so if we, I mean, I, you got the data, I, whether you put it in the sequel or whatever, try to come up with a report like that. Because I can see in the party department that I have a a truck this year, a truck three years ago, and this kind of stuff. And the port, I can see that it's an ongoing six-year project, two-year project, or whatever it is. It was just a real quick glance. You could, you could get a pretty good idea of what we're looking at, capital, and it's, it was in columns by years, right? It was just easy to read.
So there is a, in the back, there's a tab that has CIP. So in there is the one-year, five-year CIP by project type, by department, by funding source. So all of the ones that say capital and then the department were put behind the department so that they were easier to get to with the department. But the summary, the capital improvement plan with the one-year, five-year type department and funding source is in this list.
Yeah, but it it's hard to read if you go through that because you're turning map. We we took the same information or similar information from four pages and turned it into twelve or fourteen. I just, it doesn't make sense to me. That that one cheeky used to give us had all the capital budget. And I know that this is a different format. It's just harder for for me to read. I don't. It's much harder at this table. You work with this all the time. We don't. When we got this budget, it was a few days later and we were in the transmission, transmission. And it's a whole new format that we really didn't get much training. So I don't think I'm doing the job that I did last year in regard to budget that I that's happening this year, because it's harder for me to find information in there.
So I I think at the very beginning, we asked, we asked you to let us know. So the, do you have the old, have this little format? So do you, can you, is it just the first summary pages that you?
Yeah, you know, we're showed, it showed, it showed it by how many years of five years, five-year plan, I think it was, was.
There's a one-year. Well.
Now, there's one there that has five-year plan. It runs it out through the years and it just lists all the capital projects within the department, individual departments.
Okay, so there's a one-year, which is also in here.
Yeah.
And then there's a five-year, which is also in here. And then there's by funding source, which is also. So.
It was just real easy to read it all. And and I think the information's here. It's just so much harder for me to find it. We can continue on what you're doing.
We're done on port?
Have we done the port? Any other questions on port? Yes, Nick.
Is there any way, because you said that these might get done the next two years? That's about what you said sometimes.
Yeah, I I I think it's safe to say, um you you know, this is, we will certainly try to get them all done within two years. That's the, that's the mindset. You know, the unfortunate, unfortunate part is we're starting from ground zero on, once these are approved, and then I've got the the get moving to get this done. Um ideally, get the design done, get everything done, get it on, uh and get it on the street uh this year for twenty twenty six, so we can move into construction hopefully by twenty twenty seven.
I I know it's asking for more paperwork, but it it seems like we ought to be able to get a date for design, a date for being on the street, and a date for completion with each one of these projects, because we can't track nothing except the, we know we got uh eleven million dollars out there that may be spent in two years. And and some of them are gonna be, it sounds, looks like uh like the Harborview Park dock upgrade, and so forth, may be done partly by uh, I'll call force account, but by staff and partly by contract. And you gotta time that, because people, you're gonna be using it for six months out of here.
Is that a list that council would like for port department?
What's that?
I support a dick feels he needs that, then I support.
Yeah, we can get that information. Michelle, I think I was looking at is uh A four in the whole budget. I thought that was just the summary of project and department's vision.
Your honor.
Yes.
Is tonight the last night to make amendments on the general government's bill?
Will you do it all the way? What time we approve the budget?
Because of the hour, I will wait until it is paid.
Okay.
I don't want to hold anybody here later.
All right. Yes, one more question. Yes.
Of these pages, then in the back, that she had all the capital listed, can you make that machine manipulate them so that they're all of this year's in this block and all this year's in this block, all this year's in this block? Instead of, they're scattered. Look at the, it's like uh twenty-two back there.
Unfortunately, that was one of the things, and we did ask for, we asked for a little bit more flexibility in that area, but it's either listed by funding amount or alphabetical. No, it just doesn't make, we need a different options. But we have asked for that, and they said, well, that's a good idea. So they are.
They're thinking about it, huh?
They're looking into that, and hopefully they can give us more flexibility, because I agree that it, a funding amount, I guess, can be helpful. But then you can't manipulate how it's then attached in each department. It lists them alphabetically. So we stuck with alphabetical. So in all the lists, and then behind each department in the blue, it's alphabetical. To me, it's not that easy. You used to thinking alphabetical. I don't know why. I mean, I look at the list and I think, okay, A, B, C. I'm a numbers person.
If I don't know, if I don't know the name of the project, I can't find it.
Right. If I, yeah, you have to know, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, do anything else for the port? We've already done the rest of the stuff, so um that would bring us down.
To a motion.
To a motion. Postpone consideration of resolution twenty-five two nine nine six.
Your honor, I move the city council postpone consideration of the draft twenty twenty six general government operating capital budget until Thursday, December eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
During CNN, would you please form a rule?
Yes.
Yes.
Then again.
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Cage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Do you want a ride?
Yes.
Okay.
About, about move. Get, I'll take two.
No.
I totally agree.
I already marked you. No, yes. Kooz.
Dick wants to spend the night here.
Bring us in there and counsel comments. Yeah.
Nothing for me, your honor.
Riley.
I just had one thing that I had to say that is a little bit caught me off guard. Just speaking as a general person, and maybe this isn't appropriate to say, but a comment was made that we shouldn't be considering eliminating people based on performance. And although I disagreed with the main thing we were discussing, to me, that was just something I had to address, because I think in the most people watching would say that is a concern. So I had to address that, but that's all.
Jay.
Nothing, your honor.
Nick. Judy.
Uh I just want to say I'm really happy to see that KPU and the IT department um are sitting and talking and working together and hopefully will have some efficiency through that. So I think it was, although I didn't think the first go-around was positive, I think the end result was. So I was happy to see that.
Generally.
Nothing, your honor.
Abby.
None.
Uh thanks, council, for all their time and efforts here. Uh again, we're coming back at six o'clock on the eleventh. Be good jumping into KPU at that particular time or working on any updates to the the budget that we will have. Um I'd like to thank staff, uh manager's office in regards to the conversation and starting the process of IP and KPU meeting with each other, uh stressing their uh desires and concerns and working it through. And I think that's better for the for the city. And with that, I have nothing else.